Okay, good evening to you all. My privilege as mayor to call this a regular meeting of the Garner Town Council to order, our December 7 meeting. So to begin our meeting tonight, I will ask the clerk if she will to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And as you will note, Councilmember Dellinger is with us this evening remotely, and we'll talk about the process of that. We are glad to welcome all the council here this evening. So at this point, I'm going to call on Councilmember Elmo Vance, who will lead us and guide us through our pledge of allegiance, and also introduce the person who will be giving our invocation, Mr. Vance. May we all stand?
A mayor and council and members gathered, it gives me great pleasure to introduce a friend of mine Reverend James Clanton. He is the pastor of Wake Baptist Grove located on Main Street in Garner. Thank you, Pastor.
Welcome, sir. Good to see you.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God in whom we live, move and have our being. We thank you on this blessed day to be able to come and stand before the leadership of our dear town, the town of Garner, the little town of Garner. God, we thank you for leadership that looks at the little town but thinks big, that looks at a little town but thinks unlimited. Where can we go, Lord, particularly as we seek wisdom from Ohio? We thank you for the leadership of Mayor Marshburn and for the leadership of all of those who want to see our fair town grow and become all that it can be in you. We ask you to bless this meeting tonight, that it be fruitful, that it be truthful, that, oh God, it will lift up a standard before the residents of Garner that says that our leadership is concerned about us. They want the best for the people in the town of Garner. And God, we pray that as this meeting concludes, that you would be glorified, the residents of Garner will be edified, and the devil will be terrified. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And we sometimes give pastors an opportunity to tell us about any particular events going on at their particular congregation and church that they'd like to mention.
Well, amen. Thank you, Mayor. Well, of course, we are like all other churches dealing with the pandemic, and that has limited a lot of things that we would be doing. But thankfully, we are able to continue some ministries. We are engaged in the Angel Tree Project right now. We've been passing out produce on a regular basis, and the churches, I mean, we're doing well. Praise God. And so we're serving the community. And we're thankful for the opportunity to be right on Main Street here in the town of Garner and to continue to let a light shine right there from our little perch. And so thank you for allowing me to share some words. And thank you, let me say personally, for what you did for me back in July. I will never forget that. And anytime I can be of service to the council, I told Councilman Vance, if he calls, I'm coming.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We hope to have you back soon. Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, following the agenda, the next item is petitions and comments. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we had anybody sign up tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there persons here that came this evening desiring to make petitions or comments to the council? If so, if you will let me know, I would recognize you at this time. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move to the next item, and that is the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, you have the agenda before you, so I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Any questions, comments, changes, anybody notes? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. D, do you want to say aye?
Okay.
You actually have to call the roll for any vote during the remote meeting.
Okay, so we should go back and call the roll for the approval of the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, if you will do that.
I certainly will. Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion is approved. Perhaps at this point, Mr. Attorney, should I go ahead and just sort of read the information as it relates to our meeting this evening being a remote meeting, or should I do the first public hearing?
I think you can wait until the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, I don't have any notes as it relates to any presentations, so unless anybody's aware of any specific presentations, we will move beyond that. And the next item of business is to ask the council to approve the consent agenda. I believe there's only one item on the consent agenda, so do I have a motion of approval?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Okay, all in favor, we will call the roll again, and if you will do that for us, Ms. Clerk, I appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda is approved. All right, thank you very much. So now we will move to the section of our agenda under item H, which is a series of public hearings that we will get to. And the first one here will be by Reginald Bowie, our senior planner, who will be presenting. But let me explain at this point procedurally how we will move forward. Since our meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Session Law 2020-3, as you note who are here in the audience, Councilmember Dellinger is participating virtually. Whenever he cannot be seen on the screen, he will identify himself by name prior to asking questions and participating in deliberations and making motions and proposing amendments and voting. For all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing, and those should be submitted in writing by email to s gibson at garnernc.gov. That is the email for our town clerk. And so that's a process we use as it relates to our remote meeting. Okay, I believe at this point, we'll wait till the quasi-judicial hearing to read the other information. So at this point in time, our first public hearing has to do with UDO 2004 Telecom Towers. And Mr. Reginald Bowie, our senior planner, there he is. Okay, thank you. Come forward if you will, Mr. Bowie, and make your presentation at this time. Should I guess, are there any witnesses here that are going to speak to this issue?
Yes, Mr. Herrick representing the petitioner.
Okay, I believe I need to get him sworn, do I not? Where is he?
This is actually a legislative hearing, so you do not need to swear the witnesses in.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
But for the next case.
Okay, I'm trying to get there too quickly. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Bowie, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I will be presenting a case that has been brought to us. It is for a, is for the relief of setback requirements for cell towers by way of text amendment by Falk Foster by James L. LePain. The applicant, Falk Foster, by James L. LePain, owners, no owners, no location, track size. This information was presented at a previous meeting in which the petitioner explained that they did not have one particular site in mind, but several locations throughout Garner where they were considering putting towers or expanding towers. Current text as written, Article 5, Use Regulations B8-C7. A setback radius shall be required as follows for all cell towers that are permissible in districts except where stricter standards are required in the R-40 district. A, from all sides of a tower, there shall be a minimum setback of 500 feet measured straight lines to any portion of a property line of a residentially developed lot. B, where any side of a tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 100% of the tower height. The town council may allow this setback requirement to be reduced to a minimum of 60% of the tower height based on competent evidence provided by the applicant clearly showing that the structural integrity of the tower is designed to collapse within the reduced setback distance, and that affected owners of record adjacent to reduced setback distance provide written documentation that they do not object to such setback reduction. C, where any side of a tower site adjoins property zone non-residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 6% of the tower height. D, the town council may require that a tower setback radius area not contain any buildings, structure, or land uses if the council concludes that such building, structures, or land uses could be impacted by the structural failure of the tower. Proposed text by applicant. A, from all sides of a tower, there shall be a minimum setback of 200 feet measured in a straight line to any portion of a property line of a residentially developed lot. B, where any side of a tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 100% of the tower height or the break point minimum. C, where any side of a tower site adjoins property zone non-residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 60% of the tower height if the tower is not designed with break point technology, or if the tower is designed with such technology, then the setback must be break point minimum distance. D, the town council may require that a tower setback radius area not contain any buildings, structures, or land uses if the council concludes that such building, structures, or land uses could be impacted by the structural failure of the tower. E, break point minimum distance. Break point design technology, which is defined as the engineering design of a tower wherein a specified point on the tower is designed such that in the event of a structural failure, the failure will occur at the break point rather than at the base plate, ankle bolts, or any other point on the tower. F, if a tower has been constructed using break point design technology, the minimum setback distance shall be equal to 110% of the distance from the top of the structure to the break point level of the structure, or the minimum side and rear yard requirements, whichever is greater. Certification by registered professional engineer licensed by the state of North Carolina of the break point design and the design fall radius must be provided together with other information required herein from an applicant. For example, on a 100-foot tall monopole with a break point of 80 feet, the minimum setback distance will be 22 feet, or the minimum side or rear yard setback requirements for that zoning district, whichever is greater. Now we'll cover somewhat of the neighboring jurisdictions have in their ordinance pertaining to telecommunications towers. The City of Rowland, UDA Article 6.3 Public and Institutional, 6.33 Telecommunications Towers Less Than 200 Feet. A, distance from tower is measured from the tower itself, the minimum setback from the outside dimensions of the tower. B, setbacks, 1, 20 feet from a developed lot that is not residential, 2, 200% of the tower height, except if that monopole, then 100% of the tower height from an abutting residential district, 3, 100% of tower height from mixed use or special use district, 4, 20 feet from public street, 5, if the tower is on a civic use in a residential district, 200% of tower height unless a protective yard, 100% plus vegetated buffer is provided. Knightdale, UDO Chapter 3 Additional Use Standards, 3.3 Additional Standards by Use. DDD Wireless Communication Facilities Towers, RRMI Special Use, 2.38D. 1, distance from tower is measured from the tower itself. 2, setbacks, towers must be set back from any residential district at minimum of 200 Clayton, Chapter 155 Unified Development Code, Article 4 General Development Standards, 155.310 Telecommunication Facilities. 1, distance from the tower is measured from the center of the tower. C, Specific Telecommunication Definitions, Tower Base. For measurement calculations, the tower base is the point on the foundation reached by dropping a perpendicular from the geometric center of the tower. 2, setbacks. M, General Development Standards. 3, setbacks. 1, Break Point Design. 2, if not designed with break point design, Height of the Tower. Height of the Tower. So we did some research here in Garner for existing tower sites, and I'm going to cover for you how they relate to our current standards. Cell Tower, 1901 Benson Road, it is a 150-foot monopole. As you can see by graph, the yellow radius, 6% tower height buffer. B, blue circle, tower height buffer. And A, red circle, 200-foot tower buffer. So as you can see, the 200-foot tower buffer, this tower does not meet that, although it does meet the tower height buffer and 6% tower height buffer. Cell Tower, 7724 Caddy Road, is a 195-foot monopole. The 6% tower height buffer, as you see, that's indicated, and the tower height buffer and 200-foot tower buffer are the same. And this particular tower does meet those setback requirements. Radio Tower, 1423 Creeds Road, is a 225-foot antenna. And as you can see, it meets all the requirements. It's skirted a line on the tower height buffer, but the 200-foot tower buffer and the 6% tower height buffer, it does meet those requirements. Cell Tower, 1117 Rand Road, is a 175-foot monopole. This tower does not meet the 6% tower height buffer, the tower height buffer, or the 200-foot Cell Tower, 828 Thompson Road, 185-foot monopole. It meets the 60% tower height buffer. The tower height buffer and the 200-foot tower buffer are both compromised on the adjoining Recommendation, if approved, this text amendment would apply to all telecommunications towers permissible in the R-40, community retail, service business, and I-2 zoning district. If the council is interested in moving this forward, staff will draft ordinance language, which will be sent to the planning commission for recommendation, then back to council for Are there any questions that you have for me at this point?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, for your presentation. We'll go to council members and see if there are questions they have for you. And then the other gentleman, is he planning to present also, or?
He's prepared.
Okay, you're here for questions if we need it.
I'm prepared.
Okay, sure, thank you. I'll start with Ms. Behringer. She has any questions, comments? Okay, none. Mr. Vance?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Ms. Singleton?
Not, no, sir.
Okay, none. And Mr. Matthews?
The only thing I've got is those towers is already up. You said that did not meet those new zones. Is there anything going to happen there, or are they just going to be grandfathered in as is if we approve this?
They're grandfathered in as is. They were, I think they were existing prior to the rewrite of the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Dellinger, questions for Mr. Bowie?
No, I think we had some conversation around the minimum height, but I think at this point, it can go to a planning commission and come back to us.
Okay, thank you, sir. So the action you're asking tonight is if we want to move forward, this would go to the planning commission for their consideration, and then it would come back to this council at a future date?
Yes.
Okay?
That is correct.
Is there any other information that you think our friend in the audience could provide, or if we don't need to hear from him, we'll just move along?
No, I think, well, he presented at the last meeting, and he's indicated that he really didn't need to tonight unless there were specific questions from the council.
Okay, all right. We'll forego that unless he wants to be heard. Okay, all right, good, thank you. So, okay, counsel, what is your pleasure as it relates to the recommendation from Mr. Are you in agreement to go ahead and move this forward, and this matter will be taken up by the planning commission? I'm not sure exactly when, but in a soon meeting, I would think.
Yes, sir.
We just need a motion. I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing for public comments and then refer to the planning commission for review.
Second.
So I'm assuming a public hearing will be set at a future meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering. Public hearings, so I believe this is designed, Mr. Singleton, to, yeah, and if there are any persons who wish to speak to the issue, now would be a time to note that. Okay, hearing none, then, so, yeah, we, at this point, I think the action would be just to refer to the planning commission.
Yeah, we throw my first motion and say, have you closed the public hearing yet?
Yeah, I have not. I didn't officially hammer it.
Okay. All right, now that the public hearing is closed, I move that we refer this item to the planning commission for their review.
Second.
Okay, motion made properly seconded. Any comments, questions, concerns about the motion? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for your vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is unanimous, and so the motion is approved, and we look forward to following the process and hearing back from the, after the planning commission has taken this under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, getting back to my schedule here. Okay, the next item, CUD Z2006 and CUP SB2006, Old Stage Road Town Homes. This is a, this is a public hearing and also a quasi-judicial hearing. And so to conduct this hearing, I would need to mention that all persons who have standing to participate must indicate whether or not he or she consents to the remote meeting prior to speaking or giving testimony. So I believe, Ms. Attorney, as they come forward, I will ask them at that point that question, if they consent.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. All persons who, excuse me, under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. Do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications, or have any close familial, business, or other association relationship with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If there's any council member that that applies to, you should acknowledge that at this point in time. None? Okay, thank you. This will be a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. And again, we will ask each speaker if you consent to a remote, excuse me, to a remote hearing when your time comes to present. Okay, if you expect to give testimony in this hearing, if you will at this time, see the clerk, please, and be sworn. He is in the corner back there.
Did she sign in? Anybody sign in?
Yes.
Everybody else signed in? Okay, if you could raise your hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So at this point, I'm going to formally open the public hearing, and we will call Mr. Banford to present for the town. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Do you consent for this matter to, let me see where my notes are, Ms. Attorney. Yeah, do you consent for this to be conducted as a remote hearing?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use rezoning along with a conditional use subdivision plan. The property is located on the west side of Old Stage Road, north of Vandoor Springs Road, directly across from Poplar Springs Church Road. Track size is around 63.76 acres. The neighborhood meeting was held remotely on October the 7th. This is a boundary of the project and rezoning site outlined in orange on this map. Old Stage Road runs along the eastern boundary of the property. Poplar Springs Church Road is located here. Just south, we have Somerville Park Road, where there's some industrial and commercial uses. And to the south, we have Vandoor Springs Road. This is a Google Street View looking south on Old Stage with the rezoning site over to This is a zoning map of this area of Garner. The property is zoned R-40, which is low-density residential. On the, to the north, we have some R-20 zoning. There's some neighborhoods north of the site in our ETJ. On the east side of Old Stage, we have some more R-40 zoning. On Somerville Park Road, we have some heavy commercial service business zoning where some industrial businesses are. Directly south of the site, we have some service business conditional use zoning. And to the, I guess southeast, we have Vandoor Pine Subdivision zoned both R-9 and R-12. This table shows the rezoning cases for this area of Garner. This table shows the rezoning cases for this area of Garner. The oldest case on file is from 1984. This was the Somerville rezoning from light industrial to service business. There are two recent cases, from 2018. We had another rezoning on Somerville Park Road to service business conditional use. And there was also a rezoning on Lager Lane, near Vandoor Pine subdivision, from R-40 to R-9, for some additional single-family development. Existing zoning is R-40, minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, and the density is around 1.08 units per acre. The requested zoning classification is multifamily one, conditional use district 231. Proposed are 318 townhomes, at a density of 4.99 units per acre. This chart shows all the permissible uses in the MF1 general use district. The applicant has proposed some use restrictions and also some conditions for the project. Out of this list, the applicant has restricted the, the use to townhomes. The zoning conditions are in your staff report. I will highlight the ones that have been added since the planning commission meeting. This is the first one. At least one, two-foot horizontal offset per every two units. This is a new condition that's been added. The second condition that's been added since planning commission, number 10, all townhouse units shall, shall have a minimum of .046 gauge vinyl siding. Another condition that's been added since the planning commission, number 12, all residential building side elevations shall have at least two operable windows. The neighborhood meeting was held virtually on October the 7th. There were approximately 76 properties identified within the public hearing, and also the neighborhood meeting notice area. The project site is shown in red on this map. The 300-foot notification buffer is shown in black. And properties that meet the notification notice requirement are shaded in blue. Moving on to traffic, this project site has approximately 2,400 feet of road furniture along Old Stage Road. Old Stage Road is a NC DOT maintained facility, and is a major thoroughfare on the 2010 transportation plan. Traffic along Old Stage Road and Fayetteville Road in the vicinity of the applicant's site has remained steady over the past 10 years, with increased growth in 2019. The NC DOT annual average daily traffic counts on Old Stage Road and Fayetteville Road over the past 10 years of available data are displayed on the following chart. So Fayetteville Road runs along in here, behind these tables. Old Stage Road runs in this vicinity. So this shows the traffic counts from 2009 to 2019. So we do have the NC DOT traffic counts for 2019. So in this vicinity, or, or north of the rezoning site, the annual average daily traffic count was 11,500. South of the rezoning site, near Vandoor Springs Road, the 2019 annual average daily traffic count was 18,500. Moving on to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, this is the future land use map. And this site is designated as medium-density residential. In this category, the plan recommends a density between 2.5 to 5 units per acre, and this includes single-family, duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhome-style developments. The proposed density for the project is just under the upper limit of the recommendations at 4.99 units an acre. So no future land use map amendment is needed with this request. This proposal is also in support of principles found in the long-range plan under living Elevate standards for multifamily housing, including exterior materials, open space requirements, and facades. This zone will provide for approximately 29.7% of open space, in addition to enhanced exterior materials offered up as zoning conditions. Garner recognizes that its housing stock is aging, that it can be more diverse to attract younger residences, and retain older ones, page 63. This zone provides exterior maintenance-free choices for owners, and low yard maintenance as well. Keeping our character, the plan states on page 56, promote open spaces and natural features such as major trees, streams, hills, and woodlands. This zone provides for approximately 18.95 acres of open space around some environmentally sensitive areas and flood zone areas, and this is along Echo Creek. This request is consistent with the future land use map, and is also consistent with several guiding principles of the plan. And that concludes the rezoning presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Allison will pick up and go through the details of the townhouse site plan.
Okay. Counsel, I will give you an opportunity to ask your questions of Mr. Banford, if you have any. I'll start with Mr. Vance. Not at this moment. Okay. Ms. Behringer? Okay, none. And Mr. Singleton?
No, I'll have some later about the roadway improvement, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Matthews?
None at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, I'm not forgetting you, sir.
I'll wait till after the subdivision presentation.
Okay, all right. So apparently no questions for you this time. Ms. Jones is gonna present on the other segment. Ms. Jones, before you begin, do you, do you consent to this, this being a remote meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
I am presenting the subdivision portion of this project. And as David mentioned earlier, the track size is 63.76 acres, and the proposed use are townhomes, 318 dwelling units, to be exact. The tree coverage, tree requirement is 12%, excuse me, the tree cover, requirement of 12% is met by existing and proposed plant material. The plan shows 12.56 coverage, which is 7.70 acres. The perimeter buffers are 35 feet for the east, 35 foot for the north, and 35 foot for the west as well. The street buffer is 35 feet. But I wanted to point out, normally, street buffers, I would say, is just, street trees are being provided every 40 feet. However, the applicant is providing an enhanced street buffer to include not just only street trees, but understory trees and shrubs as well. Along with the street trees I just mentioned, they are being provided every 40 feet along all public streets as required. Open space, the required is 10%, and they're providing 29.7%. The Parks, Recreation, and Culture Resources Department recommend a fee in lieu for parkland dedication. The amenities for this project are a gathering space, a fire pit, a pergola, and a sitting area. There will also be a toilet play area for the residents as well, for the children. And this is just a conceptual drawing of the potential pergola and the playground area The inspectors department, together with the fire department, have reviewed and approved this plan as proposed. Environments and flood plain, this site does contain female floodway, however, there are no proposed development within the environmentally sensitive areas. Stormwater management, the Old Stage Town Homes is a multifamily development site that is located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal, as well as the water quantity requirements for 1, 10, 25-year storm events. This development per plan, excuse me, proposes a wet retention pond to treat impervious surface for development. The wet retention pond will provide treatment for both nitrogen and 85% TSS removal, as well as the water quantity requirements for this site. A nitrogen pavement plan, a nitrogen pavement, will be also required as a part of this development. Water and sewer, this site will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer that will be extended from existing infrastructure. The roads and sidewalks, this parcel has approximately 2,400 linear feet of furniture on Old Stage Road, which will be widened to half of the town's major collector street. This street section includes three vehicle lanes, bike lanes, curb gutter, and a sidewalk. The development plan, excuse me, development proposes two full access entrances, each with a dedicated right and left turn into the site. The townhomes are served by internal network of public, local, and minor collector streets, with sidewalks on both sides. The road stub will be provided to the vacant parcel to the south. A road stub will also be built as far as possible to the west, with a fee in lieu of construction provided for half the stream crossing that will be required to extend the further road, road further, excuse me. And this is just the overall picture of the site. And these, this is the proposed elevations for the site as well. And just to point out something, the applicant probably would say something too, but the proposed offset that David mentioned, every two units, you can see that in this bottom picture really good. Parking, each unit has two spaces in their lot, as well as required by the ordinance. Townhomes also have an additional requirement for guest parking at a rate of 1 for every four units in the development. They're required to have 80 spaces, they're providing 102. Lighting for the parking lot meets the requirements of the UDO, as well as staff's recommendations for LED lighting. The street lighting will be reviewed at construction drawings to middle. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan identifies Old Stage Road as a two-lane divided roadway, with a greenway on, or side path, and bicycle share roads markings along Old Stage Road. By completing half the proposed major collector section, which includes the bike lanes and the sidewalks, this project may be found in conformity with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation This project does not fall within a land acquisition area within the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Resources Comprehensive Master Plan. There will be a greenway provided on this site. The fee in lieu of parkland dedication fee will be reduced by the value of the greenway easement. Therefore, this pro, this project as proposed may be found to be conformity with Parks, Recreation, Culture, Resources Comprehensive Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revision, staffs find that this project as now proposed conforms with the regulations of the UDO, so long as the following project specific, specific conditions are met. Prior to the receipt of approved plans, engineering inspection fees must be paid to Town of Garner. Prior to the recordation of the first plan, a voluntary annexation petition for the entire project site shall be filed with the planning department. Documents establishing a homeowner's association and restrictive covenant shall be submitted to the Garner Planning Department for review. Prior to the issuance of building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh. The stormwater program administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to be approved to an approved mitigation bank. Prior to the issuance of each building permit, a fee in lieu of parkland dedication shall be paid to Town of Garner. The developer shall be responsible for all roadways improvements required by NC DOT. And the construction drawings must be submitted to the engineering department following site plan approval. The planning commission reviewed this request at the October 19, 2020 meeting. By 4 to 2 vote, the planning commission confirmed staff findings in section 7 that CUP SB 2006, Old Stage Town Homes, is in conformity with adopter plans and policies. The commission further accepted staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plans, Comprehensive Plan being detailed in sections 5 by this report, as their own, and recommended approval of CUDZ 2006 to the town council by unanimous vote. Draft minutes of the meeting are available for consultation concerning, concerning the zoning motion and discussion. Changes to the plan after the planning commission, the applicant, applicant committed to an enhanced street buffer to include street trees, understory trees, and the shrubs. The internal open space areas were moved around to create a more open feel in the subdivision, and some of the townhome buildings were moved around or broken up to create a more open space, open feel of the subdivision. These were some of the concerns that planning commission had, so the applicant heard those concerns and made some changes to the plan before they came to you tonight. Are there any questions for staff, for the site plan, or for the zone?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones, for your presentation, and there may be some, so I'm gonna start to my left, and see if Mr. Matthews has any of this.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, recognize you for any questions?
I will, when we get to the roadway improvement.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I have a question. There were, the planning commission voted 4 to 2 in favor of the recommendation, so do you know the reasons for the two no votes?
They expressed their concerns about the, the layout of the subdivision. They felt like kind of, I don't know, blocky, so to speak, because I heard someone say that. That's why the applicant changed around some of his buildings to give it more green, open space. And one particular commissioner about the landscaping plan, but he said he really couldn't see it that well. So the applicant said they will add some color to it to make it stand out, so that he can see how the landscaping plan will look overall for the, the site, not just on the paper. And the landscaping for like the front as well, they had questions about, or concerns about the street buffer, so to speak, and the landscaping, providing a, a buffer from the neighbors' backyards to their homes, and the street, excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, questions, comments?
One question right now about it being located in the Swift Creek Watershed Protection Area. And when I look on iMaps, what I see is that there is a 50-foot critical buffer area in the center of that project. Is that still there, or what is the status of that? Because I don't see that reflected on the site plan at all, but I do see that it exists as part of the GIS system.
On our GIS system? Are you referring to what's in pink?
Yes, sir.
That just signifies what they thought at the time would be a feature that would be subject, I believe, to Neuse River buffer rules. that would be subject, I believe, to Neuse River Buffer rules, but I do not believe that that feature is present any longer. Um, so this comes back from the, the nineties and probably late eighties. Um, but they have had a Neuse River Buffer determination, and there's nothing in that area.
Okay. That's my only question for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Uh, Mr. Vance?
Oh, yes. Question in reference to the, a proposed greenway. Where is that greenway proposed? Is it shown on the site plan?
It would be on the, the rear side, well, the backside. So I don't, can I minimize here? Can you see my little red?
Yes.
Up in this area?
That's it. Okay. All right. That's the only question I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That was it. Anybody else suck around?
And the applicant is here too, if they have any questions for applicant as well.
Yes, yes. I was gonna recognize that person next, I guess. So here through Ms. Jones, uh, we'll go to whoever the applicant wants to, uh, have come forward. If you will, please, sir, come. Yeah, you can speak from there over here. Please state your name and address, if you will.
Sir, uh, and good evening, Mayor Marshburn and Mayor Pretten, Behringer, members of the town council. My name is Neil Gauch. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Logroom at one twelve West Main Street in Durham. And I do not object to the virtual format.
Thank you.
No problem at all. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant to present evidence in support of its application for the rezoning and for the subdivision approval for a residential townhome community, uh, with a total of three hundred and eighteen homes. We will demonstrate that the proposed plan meets all the requirements for approval set forth in the UDO this evening through the exhibits and the testimony of the following witnesses. Uh, first, Ms. Beth Blackman, who is the project manager for the project from the Timmons Group, Mr. Keith Roberts, the head, uh, project engineer, also from Timmons, and Mr. Jeff Hockenodle, the projects, uh, traffic engineer, who is also from Timmons Group. I would, if this is the appropriate time, like to proffer each of these witnesses as experts in their fields, if the, if the board would have them.
So noted.
And, uh, we also have Mr. Jules Smith, who is with the applicant group. Uh, the staff report and the application materials include the site plan and, I believe, the TIA, which were created by our experts. At this time, I would like to move into evidence for the record. All of the materials relied upon by our witnesses, including the staff report, our application materials, all of its attachments, our site plan, um, and our experts' plans and reports. And I would ask that judicial notice be taken with regard to the contents of the UDO, the comprehensive plan, and any other plan adopted by the town. Sorry about all those formalities, but we are in a quasi judicial setting, so I did want to get those out the way.
Sure, thanks.
Uh, now I'll give a little bit of context about this project. Um, the property is about sixty-four acres in size and currently is zoned for single-family, one acre or larger lots, generally speaking. It's on the west side of Old Stage Road, just north of Bandor Springs Road. The requests before you today include the re, uh, the rezoning of the property to multifamily and approving a subdivision plan for a residential townhome community with three hundred and eighteen homes. You will see from the zoning conditions, uh, to the careful design of the project, the applicant appreciates the increasingly diverse housing needs of the town's growing population and understands the importance of true placemaking. For example, the developer is committing to providing more than one outdoor space and will include a fire pit, pergola, and a totlot. Moreover, moreover, the zoning commits to covered entries, operable windows on all facades, horizontal offsets, uh, decorative garage doors, quality materials, and other design elements, which ensure an architectural character consistent with the authentic hometown nature of Garner. In recognition of the aging population, this community also will feature at least one hundred homes with a main floor master bedroom to cater to folks who might not prefer to go up the side of steps every day. We did receive a unanimous recommendation of approval on the zoning from the planning commission, and that is not surprising because the plan is consistent with the twenty eighteen Garner Forward Plan. The Garner Forward Plan recognizes that conventional post-war development patterns cannot accommodate the kind of growth that the town is experiencing. At the same time, the comprehensive plan prioritizes maintaining the character of the town, especially by preserving and maintaining green spaces. The future land use map designates the area for medium-density residential, which contemplates townhome-style residences at densities approaching five units per acre, which is consistent with the requested zoning. The zoning also commits to higher-quality building materials to help ensure the longevity of the community. Moreover, as a townhome community, the roofs, exterior building facades, and yards are low maintenance or free of maintenance by the homeowners because the HOA maintains those areas. Additionally, the project provides about twenty-nine point seven percent of the acreage as open space, including private amenities and even a portion of the public greenway. From a zoning standpoint, the project really delivers on all accounts. Our expert witnesses will now address the various factors which you almost make findings on in order to approve the subdivision plan. Through their testimony, you will learn that the plan meets all the requirements necessary for your approval tonight. Our first witness will be Ms. Beth Blackman.
Okay, uh, will you, uh, I'll ask you a consent question. Do you consent to the remote hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If you would restate your name and address.
So Beth Blackman, I'm one thirteen Lager Lane, Garner, North Carolina. I am a civil engineer with Timmons Group and the lead project manager on this project. So I've been practicing for over fifteen years, and I received my degree from NC State University. I've been licensed as a professional engineer in North Carolina since two thousand and three, and I oversaw the creation of the plans that you have before you. So the plans before you tonight are substantially complete after several rounds of review with the professional planning staff. To my knowledge, all technical review comments have been addressed at this point, so the plans are ready for approval. And that is the first finding you must make, that the plan complies with all applicable provisions of the UDO. As noted in the staff report, that is continued and confirmed through the review process. As proposed, the development will comply with all town requirements. I also wanted to touch upon the compatibility of this site with the uses in the surrounding area. So while this surrounding area is residential, it is mostly large lot residential than what is being proposed here. So while this site is denser than the adjacent communities, it is, it is consistent with the future land use map. But we wanted to address some of the impacts through that, of that, on, with the site design. So the community is planned to be more inward-facing so as to not dominate the street frontage and drastically change the character of the corridor. The site plan provides street trees along every internal street, as Ms. Jones mentioned. And the design of the townhouses for this community respects the traditional architecture found throughout Garner. The units feature architecture that you would find, like pitched pitched roofs, decorative garage doors, pierced windows, shutters, and more. Specifically, these design features and the commitment to southern architecture was appreciated by the neighbors who attended the neighborhood meeting. Therefore, it's in my professional opinion that the community will be compatible with the approximate area. The project also respects the environment. The plan preserves seven point seven acres of existing tree coverage and provides about three times the required open space. The greenway, which is a public amenity, the rest of the open space will be maintained by the HOA. The last thing I want to touch on is the town's ability to service this area. So the area is located between existing corporate limits, so the emergency service departments pass this area in the normal course of business. And this project does not create an island for the municipal service providers. The developer, at their cost, will bring water and sewer to the property. And there were several property owners during the neighborhood meeting that mentioned an interest in the ability to tap into the town's water and sewer system. We explained during the meeting that utilities require annexation, but it was worth noting that some of the folks that were there were interested in that option. So eventually, this area, this project could help close the gap in the area that is the county, but practically surrounded by Garner. In my professional opinion, the proposed project will not create a danger to the public, result in decreased property values, or unhommannious surroundings, and is consistent with the UDO and the comprehensive plan. And the plan has met all the requirements for your approval tonight. And I'm happy to take any questions for you about these two factors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blackman.
No problem. Thank you.
I'll start with, um, on my right, with Mr. Vance, for any questions he might have.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
One, one question. Rowway designer?
Say that again?
Are you a roadway designer?
No, I'm, uh, I do the site work, the, um, site planning.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer? Uh, Mr. Singleton?
Ms. Blackman, you're gonna have your traffic engineer come speak to us.
Traffic engineer will speak after me, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
No, this time, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. So, thank you for your time. The next witness is Mr. Jeff Hockenodle, the traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you. Do you consent to the remote hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jeff Hockenodle. I'm a transportation engineer with the Timmons Group, uh, located at fifty-four ten Trinity Road, uh, Suite one oh two, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six oh seven. Um, I received my undergrad and graduate degrees from NC State in civil engineering. Um, I have a, a registered professional engineer since, uh, two thousand and two in the state of North Carolina. I'm also a registered professional traffic operations engineer. Um, I was, uh, the, the, um, Timmons Group was engaged by the developer to conduct the traffic impact analysis for the project for which I was the lead and sealed the document. Um, the report that you have, uh, in front of you, or that you have, it entered into, um, um, evidence. Again, I, I sealed and created, um, to kind of go through a little bit of history of, of how the study was completed. Traffic counts were conducted, uh, in March of twenty twenty prior to COVID nineteen restrictions. So, uh, traffic was, uh, still operating in a normal fashion. Um, we looked at, uh, we analyzed, uh, three different scenarios, or four different scenarios, actually, excuse me, five different scenarios for this one. Twenty twenty existing, uh, twenty twenty-three no-build scenario, where we looked at, uh, a future, um, without site condition, where we included, uh, trips from four background developments that are approved for construction, along with a three percent ambient growth rate. Uh, we looked at a build condition, which is, uh, twenty twenty-three with the no-build plus the site trips, uh, from the development. We looked at a no-build, uh, plus improvements, which is the recommended improvements, which I'll get to in a moment. And we also looked at a twenty, let me make sure I'm saying this right, twenty forty, uh, horizon year analysis, uh, where we looked at the improvements, uh, for a, uh, an area, uh, STIP project, which, um, will be constructed by the NC DOT, which I'll, I'll touch on in just a moment as well. For the, uh, buildout of the proposed development, uh, the proposed development, uh, we looked at, we used the Institute Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is a, a federal guideline required by NC DOT. Uh, the, the project will generate approximately twenty-two hundred and sixty-five daily trips, a hundred and thirty-eight peak hour trips in the morning, and a hundred and fifty-nine peak hour trips in the afternoon. After, um, excuse me. Upon, uh, analysis of the, um, the build conditions, uh, Timmons Group recommended the construction of turn lanes at the proposed site driveways, uh, left turn lanes into the proposed site driveways. The study was submitted to and reviewed by NC DOT and the town of Garner. Uh, the comments that came back from the NC DOT, uh, added additional improvement recommendations, uh, to the study area. They include, um, not only, uh, on, in addition to the northbound left turn lanes that we have at our site driveways, they also required the construction of southbound, uh, right turn lanes into the driveways. They recommended a southbound left turn lane onto Woodland Road off of, um, uh, Old Stage Road, and then an eastbound right turn lane off of Legend Road, uh, turning on to Old Stage Road. Those are subject to, um, availability of right-of-way and will be constructed in, in performance with NC DOT and town standards. There's also, as you know, uh, everyone's aware, there's a, there's a curved section on Old Stage Road. Uh, unfortunately, there's, you know, based on the constraints, right-of-way constraints that are out there, there's not, you know, a whole lot we can do aside from, you know, within those, when that, within the, within those parameters. Um, however, with the widening that we have on our side, there can be some additional striping that will straighten some of that curve and help improve site distances and a little bit of, uh, travel through that section. We've worked with and talked with the NC DOT, um, about this and, and, and basically put our minds together to come up with the best striping plan we possibly can. We'll continue to work with them throughout the project, um, to make sure that, um, that it's constructed in the best way we possibly can. Also wanted to go back and touch on, I'm sorry, that there's an improvement, uh, there's a STIP project, which is a, uh, NC DOT project that's proposed for, um, the intersect, along four oh one at Old Stage Road. Uh, we did, we performed a future analysis at that. Um, our traffic will have, uh, no undue effect on that site, or, excuse me, on that project that will continue to operate acceptably in twenty forty, uh, following the NC DOT's construction of the U fifty-three oh two improvements. It is in my professional opinion that the proposed, uh, with the recommended road improvements will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. I'm available to answer any questions, uh, you have about this, uh, traffic study.
Hey, thank you, sir, very much. Uh, I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
No, this time, sir.
Okay, I may hold you for a little bit later. Uh, Ms. Behringer and Mr. Vance?
Uh, yes, in reference to the improvement of site distance, where is that location where the site distance will be improved by the improvements proposed?
It's, it's located along the north side, um, of, of the property, to the right of the screen, right in there, yeah. Again, without, I mean, because, I mean, I guess it was years ago that the church constructed, got additional property and bumped the road out as it, as it is now. Um, the, the true fix to that would be relocation to that church and to move the road down. But that's, again, that's out of our, uh, the scope of our project, uh, out of the, outside of the right-of-way.
One more question in reference to the availability of right-of-way. I heard you mention that. What, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, NC DOT owns, uh, and I'm, Beth may know a little bit better about this, the actual right-of-way width. Along Old Stage Road, they own a, a right-of-way section. Um, we are widening to our half of the cross-section, so we're widening to the west, so we have control of that side. There's a fixed line on the east side, on the church side, where we can't, you know, construct without purchasing property from the, the church or the other various property owners along that side. So the, the, I guess, I think it's the church that owns the majority of that curve. And so it would be, you know, they'd have to sell this, that property. And it, when you look at it, it's actually, their parking lot is right there, and the, and the church building itself actually gets kind of close to that, that road. So they'd almost have to relocate the building in order to, to help flatten that curve a little bit more.
Okay, so if the right-of-way is not available, then, then the recommended improvements will not be done?
Well, we're, we're constructing on our side of the property. So the left turn lanes and the right turn lanes that we recommended along Old Stage would, could be constructed.
So also talking about those ones off-site by Legend and?
Yes, I, we, we, we feel that based on the, the avail, we, we believe, based on the, uh, current right-of-way, that the construction, uh, along Old Stage can be, uh, the improvement in, forgive me, I can't remember the name of the road. I think it's Woodland. Yeah.
Do you have a, maybe a different view of the map, a little further out? Sue. Councilmember Vance, to answer your question, I think you were asking about the availability. Some of these road improvements are subject to the availability of, of right-of-way. So there's a, a couple of off-site improvements on Old Stage Road, where we intend to add a turn lane to allow for the free flow of through traffic by letting the turning traffic get out of the way of that through traffic. That's going to require some road widening at where Old Stage and Legend intersect and where Old Stage and?
Woodland.
Woodland, with the name of which I always forget for some reason. Where, where the, where they intersect, provided there's enough road. Where, where they intersect, provided there's enough right-of-way width currently, we will be adding turn lanes to those areas to improve the flow of traffic. Is that right, Mr.?
Mm-hmm, it is, yes.
And is it also your opinion, at this preliminary stage, that there is sufficient right-of-way for that?
At this preliminary stage, yes, yes.
Good, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
May clarify us.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, we'll go to you next.
With a follow-up on that, so there's enough right-of-way on the westbound side of the road? Are you talking about both sides of the road, or just on the westbound side? Oh, not the westbound side, I'm sorry, the west side.
Western side, on the property side.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we will be, yeah, we, we will make sure that the turn lanes for the site driveways can be constructed, even if we have to widen, typically you widen symmetrically to do a left-turn lane, which means widen on both sides. If that can't be accomplished, they'll end up widening more on the property side to make sure the turn lanes are constructed.
How far from that curve, and all of us know on that curve, you can go around it too fast, and we've all done it, that we drive it, wrecked it, have done it before. How far is the driveway down from when the curve, when the road straightens out? How far is the entrance into the, the first entrance into the, to the proposed plan?
I think our other expert witness, Beth Blackman, might be better suited to answer it. Might take us a second to look it up.
Okay, all right, I guess, I have more traffic questions then. So, coming down Legend Road, you can put a right-turn lane on Old Stage, you got that one. The one at Woodland Road, so, how far down would that left-turn lane be to Woodland, that's going to be turning into Woodland Road, is it?
It's, we recommended a hundred foot of storage, let me make sure that we've got, I want to give you the exact distance. We recommended a hundred foot of storage plus appropriate taper, and I believe that's a 45 mile an hour, so it'll, it'll follow N C D O T's roadway guidelines.
Okay, because currently, there's a, that's a signalized intersection, and you'll, you'll put a dedicated left-turn lane there?
Dedicated left-turn lane that, that's signalized intersection, yes.
Okay, so that's to improve the traffic flow there, because the traffic does back up there. That's why I said, okay. All right, and on the, the improvements on, in front of the property, the 2,400-foot of road front, which I believe, those left-turn and right-turn lanes, will they run the entire length, or they just going to be a short period, excuse me, a short amount of feet for storage to turn left?
Yeah, we?
And to turn right?
They'll be, they'll be striped at 50 foot of storage, but what that means, you've got 50 foot of, of full-width storage, and then you're going to have another taper that goes along, coincides with N C D O T's design guidelines, which is approximately another 50-ish feet plus taper. Now, they will be widening across the frontage, which will allow some striped-out storage, basically, but, you know, when all's said and done, they're going to have a, it's a 50-foot storage plus appropriate taper. These were, these, these were sized per N C D O T driveway manual. And then the southbound right turns are going to be at 100 foot of storage with, with appropriate taper as well.
Okay. And you said this would generate approximately 2,265 average daily trips, correct?
That sounds, that sounds correct.
2,265, I was actually looking at my math, it kind of ran together.
2,265, yeah, 2,265.
Okay. All right, that's all half-right this minute.
Councilmember Simpson, I did want to get back to your question earlier. You were asking about the spacing of that driveway up on the channel there. So, this is actually a great view, you can see the road to, you can see the roads on either side, on the south side. So, that driveway coming from the north side is essentially even, is spaced between those evenly, because that's, that, that's what's required. We actually couldn't necessarily put it anywhere else, but as you can see, it's outside the curve.
Well, my, I just question is, after the turn, I mean, people go around the curve too fast. I don't care how much striping we put on there, they go around the curve too fast, and people trying to make a left, or, excuse me, a northbound left movement, that's, that's just a big concern I have. I just wonder, I was trying to see how many feet that was.
Well, I mean, as you can see, you've got the, you've got 50-foot taper going into the, into the site, but you've also got a striped-out gore area where they could, they could also sit.
I understand, I'm talking about people who are leaving the site to turn and go north.
Oh, turning to go north.
Yes, that's, that's the problem, turning left.
Oh, people coming around that curve too fast, I understand.
Yes, that's, that's the issue. How many, how many have you been on the Old Stage Road at 5:30 at night?
I mean?
Pain in the butt, it can go from 10:10 all the way to Eagle Ridge or further, backed up, so that's, that's just a concern I have, and the proximity to the curve there, of people who exceed the speed limit.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and that's also a concern the developer has. I mean, the curve is a challenging thing to navigate as is.
Yes.
And the developer here is interested in making it as safe as possible, because, you know, well, people are going to live here, and if it's not, if it's not safe to do so, the project won't do too well. That's why we worked extensively with the town staff and N C D O T to figure out a solution for that curved area. And we acknowledge, the solution that we presented is not the best solution that there possibly could be, but it is the best solution that is in the control of this developer. Without some serious acquisition on the south side of that, basically meaning condemnation, it's not possible to straighten, straighten out that curve. But, we would if we could.
So, the question is, the driveway, then why, please explain why the driveway, the entrance into the subdivision, wasn't pushed down further south?
That'd be the answer, yeah.
I'm just, I mean, it's obvious to me, it just looks too easy to me, to just shift it down, you know, shift these town hands up, I don't understand it. That is, I'm going to tell you right now, that's a very strong concern, because we're going to put it out there, and people are going to say, what are y'all doing with 318 units?
Absolutely.
And that, with that curve?
Yeah, right there, we got it there, right.
I don't understand why the driveway just didn't come down further, at me, at entrance, I mean, it looks pretty simple. But I just think it's too close to the curve, I'm just going to tell you like it is. Because you said, it's not the best solution, but it's the one that's under your control. I would think something that would be a better solution would be to slide the driveway further south, and that's just me, I'm not an engineer. But common sense sits here, looks at the curve, and says if you put the driveway further, it seemed like it would help. That's just me. I'll be quiet and let Mr. Dellinger ask questions. I'm sure he's got some. Same concern.
Okay, while, while you're contemplating that, Mr. Dellinger, you're, you're up.
Yeah, I do have some questions about this piece, but also further down at Vandora, but while we're talking about this, was there not any consideration given to purchasing those lots to the north there, and just straightening that road out on the west side? So instead of going, trying to cut into the church property, taking Old Stage north and kind of just going straight?
So, the, the, Old Stage Road already has a stream crossing in it, and the alignment you're talking about would, would create a different stream crossing, which would be a substantial environmental impact that, I mean, would not be advisable in any circumstance.
If it's to choose between an environmental effect and a huge safety concern for people, I'm just saying, is that totally precluded, or is it just something you decided not to do because it was cost prohibitive? Because the safety issues that are being raised right now are very significant, and the risk or possibility that some of those accommodations that you're proposing can't be made would maintain the danger on that curve.
So, an impact to the environment also is a, is a real safety issue in the long term for the human health. There is already a stream crossing on Old Stage Road. Having an alignment that would create another stream crossing would just create two environmental impacts. There is a solution with the church's involvement that would straighten out the road, and, and result in keeping the current stream crossing. Of course, that is in the control of the church, and we did approach the church and, and try to see what could be done to accommodate that. However, we were not able to, simply put, the church was not able to, to really respond to us on that. But it is something that we looked into. To answer your question directly, though, no, we did not look at acquiring the property on the north side to do an alignment, as you're suggesting.
I mean, my, to me, that's the recommendation, that's the suggestion I would make, if the other part is immutable, there's no, I mean, everybody on this council cares about the environment, I'll be the first one to tell you to stop cutting down more trees, but in the, when it comes to the safety of people driving on the road, that always sort of takes precedence for me. I'll leave that point right now. I have some questions. Is there a particular reason that Vandora Springs Road was left off of that traffic analysis?
Oh, look, Mr.?
Yeah, the, the scope was negotiated with, or discussed with, and agreed to by N C D O T and, and the town. Why, why it was left off, forgive me, it's been several months, I don't know what the exact reasoning was, but it, but they agreed to the scope, so, so.
So, so, in your professional traffic opinion, when you look at the traffic capacity of Old Stage Road south of Vandora Springs, that 18,500 is over capacity already, is that correct?
18,500 for a two-lane, you're, you're, you're close to capacity.
Not, my understanding is that a three-lane with dedicated turn lanes, it would be, that might be enough, but 18, to me, I think is already over capacity for a two-lane road. My, in that, is that correct?
Like I said, it's, it's, you're right on that E range, yes, so I mean, it's right at capacity.
So, adding 2,000, 200, or even half of that, would bring it over capacity. I ask the question because if you look at the, the traffic on Vandora Springs is, is really bad, there are all those folks coming up Old Stage, if you look at the numbers, you see the change, once you cross over Vandora, the number drops off from that 18,000 to 12,000, which means there are about 6,000, 7,000 trips coming on Vandora Springs. You have Buffalo Grove up the road, and you also have this subdivision. So my concern is, one, the overall traffic on Old Stage, the continued traffic with Vandora, because people trying to get to Raleigh are not going to go up to 401 and try to turn right on 401. I'm also concerned with that amount of traffic coming out of the subdivision, coming down on Stage, and trying to turn left onto Vandora, that there's not enough storage at that left turn on Vandora, and so the traffic on Old Stage North is going to get backed up. Has there been an analysis of the increased need for left-hand, left-turn storage onto Vandora?
Yeah, I apologize, we did look at Vandora, I'm sorry, um, yeah, it's, that's what, I got confused, I'm sorry. Yes, we did look at Vandora Springs. We did not make any recommendations, I can give you the levels of service and queue lengths, but if you'd like, if you'd like each of those, but yeah, like I said, we, we made no recommendations, D O T's reviewed it, no recommendations were required by them as well, so.
I find that with 2,000 trips coming out of there, either primarily going down to 5:40, or cutting across Vandora Springs to get to Raleigh, because again, you're not going to go up Old Stage and try to turn right on 401. The increased traffic makes it harder for folks in Vandora Pines to get out, Tiffany Woods folks, Eagle Ridge folks trying to turn. I have some, what were the traffic counts for Vandora?
Well, for, right, for Vandora?
77, yeah.
We've got peak-hour counts at Vandora. Lord, no, sorry, my eyesight's going. It looks like in the afternoon, we've got about 600 going south, you've got about 50 or so going to the left. Again, I apologize, my, this is print way too small for me. Yeah, if you can read it, good lord, I got to get, I've got to buy glasses.
I see 8,300.
8,300 is the average at that intersection.
Yes, I was, I was referring to peak-hour, yes, 8,300 is the, is the daily traffic, yes.
And specifically, we were asked about the A.M. peak-hour, which is in?
So you have 83 on the western part, 86 on the other part. So there, again, you're already getting close to that two-lane capacity, not even accounting for Buffalo Grove, that's being built out right now, too. Those are the southern part of the property, traffic concerns. Vandora already is, is really backed up in the morning. I'll let someone else speak now.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a specific question, Mr. Dellinger raised?
Yeah.
Did you have the, you said you had the level of services of Vandora and Old Stage, what was the level of service, as he mentioned, if you're going southbound on Old Stage, and you're going to turn left on the Vandora, what's the, because the, the storage there is very short?
At Vandora in the morning, levels of service, level of service overall is a C at that intersection for A.M. and P.M. peak-hour.
Okay.
So that's, that's?
Current.
That's current, that's 2020 existing. With the background traffic added, Vandora Springs goes to a level of service D in the morning, and E in the afternoon.
That's without improvements, but with?
No, that's without, that's without site traffic.
Yep.
With site traffic, I believe it stays a level of service D and E. N C D O T requires, let me make sure I'm saying this right, I don't want to, I don't want to misquote. It stays a level of service D and E. N C D O T requires improvements when you increase delay per a movement, or the overall intersection by more than 25%, which we do not in that case, so we did not offer improvements to that location, based on site traffic. We didn't increase the delay by more than 25%.
So you're talking to the movement of heading sap down on Old Stage and turning left onto Vandora Springs, that's what you're, you're speaking of, correct?
I was talking to overall intersection.
Okay, yes, sir.
Your southbound left is shown right now, it's, it's operating acceptably right now, based on the traffic volumes that we collected. Your background increases, I'm sure to, I should have marked these, I apologize. Southbound goes to a left, goes to a C in the morning, and an A in the afternoon, and goes to a D in the morning, and A in the afternoon.
All right, thank you for that information. And then to mention, when we talk about the 18,500 on Old Stage, we'll get to Vandora, everybody likes to throw up and talk about how bad it is on 50, 50's at 19,000. So, I've always said, I don't know why people get so bent out of shape about 50, but Old Stage Road is just as backed up as Highway 50, almost, the numbers are very similar, so, that 18,000-plus is a very similar number to what is on the section of Highway 50 from Timber Drive and Ranrove.
Okay, yeah, we'll go back to other, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Matthews, please.
Two points. Of course, we know the southern loop is coming through down that way, which I hope is going to have a tremendous impact on Old Stage as well as Highway 50 over there, and as they're moving along, so, we haven't discussed that, but I'm sure that's going to have an impact on all the numbers that we have been looking at, especially coming north or going in the morning time. But the safety, can we go back to that one slide with the entrances there? I agree with Mr. Singleton, I think this is an easy fix, where you've got that entrance right at the curve, if it was moved south, and right there, where that internal street is, right there, I think that would give you a good safety margin, distance there to take, take it away from that curve a lot farther, and it seems like an easy fix versus land acquisition and all this and that, they'll just move your entrance down between the next section down that way, they'll put you a good safety margin there. Is anything wrong with that, is that?
The problem, I guess, with that is that when you move that driveway further to the south, you lose vision around that corner. So where it's sitting right now, it's, I mean, obviously, it's not ideal, but you can, you do have site distance looking north. If you're to move that down towards, past the church driveway, you, you limit your site distance, you can't see around that corner. We don't control that property on the church, so the further you move it south, if they choose to plant trees within their property, it blocks that sightline. So you've got somebody going around that corner, as you say, probably too fast, and, you know, when they pull out, they're, they don't have any time to react. But as you move it up further, you've got a better chance to look down that road and actually see folks coming, you know, towards them.
Okay.
I mean, you look right-of-way to right-of-way, all the way, all the way pretty much down that curve.
Yeah, the sight vision does improve with that right here. Okay.
Is D O T proposing any reduction in speed on that road as part of this project?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Okay, back this way, anybody? Mr. Vance?
Yes, I think this may be a question for Ms. Black, Ms. Black, in reference to the, the greenway path, and talking connectivity, what is the connectivity? greenway path and talking connectivity, what is it connecting to?
Thank you, right now, it does not connect to anything, but it is on the new updated Parks and Rec plan, and so eventually, it would connect along Echo Creek to the north and south, and so hopefully, one day, it would connect to something.
Okay, so it's consistent with the current greenway plan?
It is, it was updated just this past spring, I believe.
Yeah, all right, that's the only question I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Barringer, do you have anything? Okay.
Mr. Matthews, can I ask Mr. Trezenberg what he just put on here, he put on sight distance, we shifted it, let the, it further south?
I was just trying to show, yeah, if a car was parked here within the existing right of ways, how far up the road you might be able to see.
So the driveway further south, and there's a greater distance than the two points on the right, am I not looking at that wrong or right? I know you have the sight distance, I understand that, the speed is an issue in that curve, I don't care what the sight distance is, if you can see it and it's going fast or exceeding the speed limit, it's still an issue at either driveway, whether you move it south or not. I see how you show, how you can see the driveway there, but the distance between where you can pick up the car and where it's further south is a greater distance. Now, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just sitting here looking at what you're showing me on here, it looks like if you moved it further south, you would see it straight, not coming out of a curve.
Right.
Now, when out of a curve, when it's fast, is fast, when it's straight, it's fast, I'm not arguing and saying that that's not correct, I'm just, you're asking us to approve something with a driveway close to a curve that all of us wish was straightened out, and I just don't, I just have an issue with that. I don't care what DOT said, what they approved, what our town folks said and approved, I'm telling you what citizens will tell us, it's why in the heckfire did y'all approve that close to curve? I'm just saying, because I would ask the same question.
Developer, I don't believe, has a problem with moving that down, but I believe that's why it was located where it was, just to get the sight, a better sight distance around that curve, I think that's something that we can certainly work with NC DOT and the town staff to come up with an ideal solution or the best solution we can, without having to, you know, purchase the church property and truly straighten that curve out.
It's a simple fix. Well, I see Mr. Johnson's going to tell us it's not that simple a fix.
Yeah, I mean, this is a discussion that we've already had quite a bit ourselves, because it is an issue, I mean, I think that the issue here is that you can move the driveway south or north, and it, because this is an S curve, it seems like everywhere you go, that the sight distance can be an issue. I think the best thing that we could propose is just to handle this during construction drawing phase, where we can actually figure out what the maximum sight distance we can get. We want to get as much as we can, and we tried talking about the flattening of the curve, and we would still like to see that curve flattened as much as feasible, with the understanding that there is a church and parking lot on the other side of the road. The design of that, or the existing curve, does not meet current design speed, it would need to be flattened to meet the design speed unless the street was either posted with a new designs, a new posted speed limit or a reduction cautionary signage in that curve. But I understand what you're saying as far as shifting it, you could also shift that driveway to the north to more bisect the curve, and then you might actually have better sight distances as well, but then you start getting into the earlier curve that's coming from the stream, can cause some of the same sight distance around that corner. So I think from an engineering standpoint, we would just want to see what the sight distance can be, try to maximize the sight distance we can to the north from that intersection. But we've not gotten that detailed of design drawings to date to be able to review.
Okay, thank you for your clear input, appreciate it.
And Mr. Singleton, just to reiterate, developer is willing to, as the site plan continues, with your approval tonight, is willing to work with town staff and NC DOT to shift that driveway one way or another, if it is ultimately what creates the best and safest scenario.
Okay, does the applicant have any other witnesses?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Keith Roberts.
Thank you, good evening, Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner, I am an engineer with Timmons Group, and I do consent to the period. So, thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, hopefully, I feel like I'm muffled, I'm trying not to be too muffled, but thank you for your time, and I'll thank staff for getting us to this point tonight, to try to make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, so. You've heard a lot of testimony tonight, I think, you know, it goes without saying, I believe that we are in compliance with the, you know, CUP requirements, UDO, Garner Forward, you know, it starts coming down now to looking at some, you know, preference and whatnot. I did want to talk a little bit, too, about the neighborhood meeting that we had, we had good participation in that, and, you know, as somebody who lives in Garner and I live off Buffalo Road, I do travel this area quite frequently and very familiar with everything that Councilman Singleton is mentioning and have the same concerns. And when we, you know, honestly, when we had a neighborhood meeting, I really thought the number one concern from the neighbors would be, would be traffic, and honestly, it was the last concern, when you look at the questions that were asked, they were mainly concerned about annexation, we had some that were concerned that these home values would be too high and would drive up surrounding property taxes, concerns about being required to connect to utilities, some actually wanted to connect to utilities, but I sat there and made notes through the whole, the whole public hearing, or the community meeting, neighborhood meeting, and the least number of questions was about traffic, and I'll be honest, I was shocked, and when the meeting was over and we were finishing up, to kind of go back to our RST project in Brookwood example, I put out there for everyone who was involved, look, hey, let's continue the conversation, if any folks who are involved in this meeting have any additional concerns, please reach out and contact us with questions if you think about something later, or if you don't feel comfortable asking it in this setting, you know, we're here to answer, answer any questions or concerns you have. And nobody responded. Then took it from myself to send out emails to people who asked questions in the meeting and those who were at, I think there was one person at the planning board meeting, and said, hey, you asked questions before, do you have any more, let's talk through this, any concerns, and again, zero feedback, you know, I reached out to Papa Springs Church twice, trying to get feedback from them on any concerns, and again, no feedback, so, you know, I think, you know, we've gone above and beyond from the site design standpoint, community meeting standpoint, working with the staff standpoint, to get to where, you know, we are tonight. And again, that's mainly what came out of that meeting, you know, from, I figured, you know, from where you guys said, that traffic, again, would be the main issue, as I thought it would be with the neighborhood meeting. Mr. Vance asked about the right of way, and, you know, where are the projects located within our road frontage, you know, right of way is obviously not an issue, because we can dedicate right of way, and we can dedicate as much right of way as we need to on our side, to make sure all of our improvements get in, so that's not an issue at all, you know, personally, where I see there could be an issue, it's not even at Woodland Road, because Woodland Road, that area is so flat, and there's enough right of way there, you know, we drive through there all the time, there's plenty of room to get in a left turn lane. I don't feel as confident about Legend Road, being able to get that right turn lane in, and honestly, I don't even, you know, I go back to what Mr. Singleton said, you know, personally, I would see more concern at Vandora than I would at Legend, I'm not, you know, but DOT recommended the right turn lane at Legend, I don't really see how that helps this situation from a, you know, common sense standpoint. But we studied, you know, what DOT told us to study, and what the town told us to study, made a recommendation based on what the two agencies told us to do, and again, have done everything we've been asked to do in order to meet everybody's requirements. So again, we would appreciate that support. As far as this driveway location goes, I appreciate what town engineer Chris Johnson mentioned, we have not done construction drawings, we can certainly move, this is not in stone, this is, you know, what we would call a conceptual site plan, it can be located north or south easily, without a problem, it failed basically in this location, because it centers up on the two main roads to the, to the east, it's in the middle, and we felt like it gave the best sight triangle, trying to get around the curve there, once we straightened it out a little bit with additional striping. But again, as the town engineer mentioned, you can, you can move it north and get more sight triangle, maybe move it south and get more, but we can certainly look at that. We do need to keep in mind, there is a right turn lane that goes into that driveway, and that certainly helps folks with the southbound traffic movement. So, again, you know, I think these improvements will benefit what is already out there, you know, we are doing a half of a back-to-back widening for the entire length of the project, so there will be additional asphalt out there for the entire length, it will not just be a right turn lane and then back into traffic and a right turn lane, so I think that's important to keep in mind, I think it's also important to keep in mind that when these TIA's are conducted, and Jeff can speak to this if he needs to, you know, we're assuming worst-case scenarios here, and we're assuming that no improvements are ever done on 401, we're assuming that the DOT project at the intersection of 401 in Old Stage never happens, we're assuming that 540 never gets built, we're assuming that the build-out of four additional projects in the area that have not been constructed yet, and we're assuming that this entire project gets put on the ground day one, and we know it takes time to go through and build and develop these projects, you know, best case scenario here, if we were approved tonight, you know, we're looking at probably, you know, it could be a year, you know, before construction is, you know, or even started, much less completed, depending on how long it takes to get through construction, approval, and environmental permit, so, again, I don't know what else we could do to make it any better than it is, and based on the TIA, with these improvements, even if the project went on the ground today and the improvements will be done prior to, you know, their first home getting occupied, the traffic is not going to get any worse, I mean, I know it's a bad situation, but we're not making it worse, and I think that's what we proved through the TIA, it will stay as is.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Roberts, Mr. Vance? Not at this moment, okay, Ms. Barringer? Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Look, a comment I do agree with what Mr. Roberts said about Legend Road, I don't see the impact there, I see more of the impact of left turn moving onto Vandora Springs Road, because if a third of the traffic on Old Stage Road, which comes to that point, turns off of that, and this is that close to that intersection, you would think, and I know they can go up here and go to Woodland and turn right and get on Timber, if that's where they're trying to get, but you would think that that left turn lane, we need additional storage, need to be improved, but DOT obviously didn't think the same, I'm just thinking, if a third of the traffic coming up Old Stage turns on Vandora, don't you think a portion of this traffic would go down there and turn in the morning, and other times of the day, but mainly in the morning is what I'm thinking.
And I, you know, and I think that's something that we can look into, and I don't want to speak for the developer, and he can throw something out if he wants to, but in my personal opinion, when you look at Legend Road, and we've all driven down Legend Road, and when you come down that hill, that's a steep hill, and there's steep embankments on both sides, and, you know, for us to make those improvements, DOT has said, we got to go get right of way and better get that in, personally, I don't think it can be built, I mean, I just don't, I don't think, even if you got additional right of way with the slope situation there and lay it back, I just don't believe we'll be able to make that improvement on Legend Road, and I really don't think it needed to be, to be honest with you, DOT just told us to investigate it and look into it. I think, you know, it'd be money better spent to take that and look at the intersection of Vandora and see if we can make some improvements there other than Legend, and I think that would be the, in my opinion, somebody who lives on Buffalo Road, would be the wise move to make, and we could do that as a condition.
Okay, everybody good?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Mr. Matthews, go ahead.
Just one comment, I think, again, the big issue, it seems like everybody's concerned is that safety there, but it sounds like we're going to be able to continue to work on this as we, if this project's approved, to work out the best possible scenario for the safety of that with our folks as well as your folks, and I just want to make sure.
Definitely, and the driveway is required, and we had to have two entrances, and that's one of them, we were just trying to get them as far apart as we could and make it, but it's easily moved, it's not set in stone, and it's something we can do a study on during construction drawings to make sure wherever it is, it is the maximum sight triangle that we can possibly get with that existing curb situation.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, give you one more opportunity.
Yeah, just kind of want to reiterate what's been said about improvements at Vandora, I want to look at 50, I'm looking right now at some of the site, the storage is a lot greater on intersections on 50, and I think, again, when you have 540 coming through, people wanting to go south, they're going to get caught back behind these people trying to turn left on Vandora, so if there's discussions that can be had about looking at improvements at that intersection versus, you know, somewhere else, I just think this one kind of begs for, you know, just a little bit more, a little more storage to keep the traffic flowing and not getting backed up down there.
Yeah, I think we can, we can definitely do that, and you all know, when you travel, you know, that road in the afternoon, where you do get stopped are typically Grove Mont, which is kind of an issue sometimes, but then Woodland is a big issue, everybody wants to turn left on, it seems like in the afternoon, more folks want to turn left on Woodland than they do Vandora, I'm not sure why, but those two are a point of concern, and putting that left turn lane on Woodland, I think, is a huge, huge deal for, you know, not only this project, but for the town to keep traffic moving through there, and looking at the intersection where Vandora is, there's tons of right of way there, there's good slope conditions, that should be an easy one to analyze and make that intersection better.
Okay, we're good, thank you, Mr. Elsche, did you want to do a summary?
Let me have one question, one question from Mr. Roberts, in reference to the site plan pertaining to the buffer, the burn, the, are burners proposed to cover the entire frontage of the property?
Yes, sir, it's not a burn, but it's a landscape buffer, but it's also an enhanced buffer, so we're doing more than what is required alone there to try to protect that corridor and give it the same feel that it now has with the wooded, the wooded condition.
Landscape buffer.
Landscape buffer.
It's normally just street trees, a street tree every 40 feet, however, they're adding street trees plus rubs, plus the understorey trees to enhance that street buffer, to be more of a buffer than just just trees.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, okay, anything else, gentlemen?
Yes, actually, I did want you to be able to hear from Mr. Jules Smith directly, who is with the development group, you know, the concerns that you all have about traffic and other concerns about this area are concerns that he shares, and it is stuff that we have looked at in depth with NC DOT and your town staff, and tried to come up with a solution that all of us together felt was the best solution, however, Mr. Smith is flexible and is willing to continue to look into this, because at the end of the day, his name's going to be on this project, and he wants to make sure that it is safe and it is beautiful community, I want you to hear from him yourself.
Is Mr. Smith, is that, I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
His full name and address, if you will.
Jules Smith, 1524 Canterbury Road, Raleigh.
Thank you, you consent to a remote hearing?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I just want to thank you for giving us opportunity to present our project to you, I just want to say a few things. First, this project is very personal, you know, we've gone over a lot of details in engineering, but it was important to me, when we started, I asked, what does Garner want this project to be one day, what do they want this land to be? And so we chose, it was important to me to propose a use that you said you wanted in your long-term plan, and then in working with the staff of the town of Garner, they've been extremely professional, it was important to me to try to say yes, as much as possible, and to the best of my knowledge, everything they've asked and said would be good for the town of Garner, we've, we've agreed to, because it's important to me for this to be a project that Garner can be proud of, and I would just, I know it's your duty to take care of the town of Garner, and so I would just point out three things that I think this project helps and is good for the town of Garner. for the town of Garner. The first, we talked about lots of traffic. You know, um, we have dealt with the NC DOT and the town staff and have said yes to everything they've asked, but it's important to me that this project be safe. Uh, I give you my commitment tonight that if it's a better thing for the town of Garner to go improve Vandoor Springs Road, I'm willing to do that. Uh, if that's what is best for Garner, we'll certainly go do that and help improve that situation. As far as the driveway, um, I agree with what's said here tonight. I'm no expert as to whether it needs to move right or left, but even if we have to lose a few units, if, if it's, um, determined to be safe to move it one way or the other, I give you my commitment tonight. I want this project to be safe. The second thing I just would share with you is, we wanted this project to be environmentally friendly and to be pleasing. And so we tried to really, uh, design it that way, have that greenway trail, have the enhanced buffer, and to give way more open space than is required. And I think that's a good project for the town of Garner. But finally, I just, one thing that hasn't been really addressed, you know, I was a home builder for a long time. Um, these townhomes, they're really nice townhomes. They're upscale townhomes. But more importantly, they have a master down. And the way Garner's going and the value of the land that's happening in Garner, it's going to be very hard to build these type of units in the future. And I think it's a really attractive product to have a townhome with a master down, and I don't think you're going to see many of these in the future because of the land prices. And so I just think that's attractive for the town of Garner to have a product like this, and I just wanted to point that out. I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I, I will just personally comment that, uh, yeah, I think the idea of, uh, of some of these, uh, type, uh, buildings to have a master downstairs is something I'm hearing from people my age and older, that, uh, too many of them have all their bedrooms upstairs, and that just doesn't fit certainly the, uh, senior, uh, senior set. Uh, so there, there is, I think, a, a need for that kind of thing here in our town, for sure. Thank you for your time. We appreciate, uh, your comments. Okay?
And just to close up, I did want to finally say, you, you, tonight, you've heard from our expert witnesses, you've also heard from the applicant. All the competent substantial material evidence in the record shows that we have met the requirements of the UDO for your approval of the request of development. And aside from the technical legal points, we feel strongly that the request is one that the board should be proud of. Providing new housing options for the growing population will be vital to the town's future success. And then I agree with Mr. Smith, those, uh, master-down units will be coveted in the future. You can see it in your neighboring municipalities that are much larger. They're, those are rare. You just can't find them. Uh, but we all know that Garner is growing. People who move here need a place to live. So the project provides a density that is going to be sustainable in the future. Uh, new housing types can be developed this way in a tasteful manner. This could be a catalyst for new development in this area of Garner. And this is no ordinary project. It has been designed with particular attention given to the residents' experience. The greenway connection and the other amenities will provide places for people to gather, places where memories will be made, no doubt. Your approval of this project can set the tone for new development in town. Approving this project makes a statement that Garner expects high-quality development with a community focus and ample open space. Therefore, we, we respectfully request your approval of the proposed development, and we will be glad to address any questions that you may have. And I thank you sincerely for your time tonight.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Um, Attorney Jones, I believe I'm obligated to see if there's any members of the public who wish to speak at this time.
Yes, that's correct.
Good. All right. Uh, are there persons here who came to speak to this issue, either pro or con? Now would be your opportunity to, uh, come and speak. Okay, sir? If you'll come to the podium and give us your name and address. I know we've been at this a while, so try to keep your comments as concise as possible. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yes, of course. My name is Brian Sherman. I live at 165 Cedar Croft Drive in Garner. Heard across from Vandoor Pines. Uh, appreciate just a few moments, and I appreciate the presentation by the applicant and, uh, and their team for that. And I just wanted to replay, as someone who's outside of the 300-foot buffer on feedback, and, uh, just wanted to mention on, on replay, a couple of the things that the council has brought up. And again, it is mostly around traffic, and I can appreciate Councilman Singleton, the comments that you've made, especially around the curve near the church. Again, I heard a lot of talk about flattening that curve, but we almost remember, too, a lot of elevation that changes up and down. So it's not just two-dimensional space that we're talking about, it's three-dimensional space. Also, there's that curve or that hill that, that grays down to, uh, the collecting space that turns left onto Vandoor Springs, um, when you're on Old Stage traveling south. Now, I just wanted to mention as well, as a resident of the area, you know, getting over to White Oak, I mean, that is the route that you come up to go through Vandoor Springs Road, either to take timber down, or you go over to, to Business 70 to get over. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways that the traffic is really going to be impacting Vandoor Springs pretty, pretty significantly. And I would ask that the council consider and, and work with the, with the applicant, again, um, to, to look at not only those potential widening and, and turn enhancements you can make from Vandoor Springs onto Old Stage, but how does that affect the roundabout that was installed in there at Buffalo? And then you have the multi-dimensional or the, the multi, uh, Buffalo project that was approved as well, all the traffic that's coming through there. And again, I'm starting to hear that, some, some of that talk in the council meeting here tonight, so I really appreciate that, again, as a resident outside of that 300-foot, uh, impacted area. But I'd like to hear much more because I, I really think the data points that you'll receive won't be, how does this affect the look of my house next door? It's the residents of, as you get further out, how does this affect my commute? And, uh, and, uh, so I, I do appreciate that, but those are my comments and...
Thank, thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming out. Okay. Are there others who, okay, please come forward? I think I'm supposed to ask you if you consent to, uh, a, a remote hearing?
I do consent to a remote hearing.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Please state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Jim Anthony, and I live at 924 Vance Street in Raleigh. And I am speaking as a supporter of the project overall. I'm going to ask one critical question as someone who owns quite a bit of land to the south of this site where we've been confronting this challenge of regional sewer lines, uh, as I'm certain this project is. My question is, how is this project planning to address the downstream sewer challenges that the city of Raleigh has identified for all the developers in this basin? That's my question.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone care to speak to that issue?
I think probably Beth Blackman and our team would be, uh, most well-suited to answer that question. Her key. Maybe both. You might hear from both.
Okay.
Well, so, good evening. Uh, Beth Blackman, again, I was just going to say that we have worked with Raleigh on downstream sewer capacities and the studies that were required, and there are some upgrades. Uh, this site will have a pump station and then force main back, um, down Buffalo Road somewhere. Um, so the studies have been completed as required, and, like I said, there are some potential upgrades that would also be required. But the, they're looking at, Raleigh's looking at this site, and, you know, you look at what you have to do for your site. You do not necessarily look at what future development would have to do. Right?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I can further elaborate on that, and I appreciate Mr. Anthony's support. Know, know him very, very well, and, uh, worked on his project with him, uh, myself and Mr. Tony Tate, maybe 10, 12, 15 years ago, I guess, uh, which was approved by this council. Uh, basically, everything on this site will eventually end up at the pump station at White Deer Park. Currently, the pump station at White Deer Park has limited capacity. There's a lot of proposed projects in this area, including the RST project that, that was recently approved by town council, recently, that will also flow eventually to White Deer Park. Basically, what Raleigh is telling us is whoever gets there, currently, first development in, you're, you're fine. But whoever gets there second, third, or fourth, may have to make upgrades to that, uh, pump station. Um, as Beth mentioned, on this project, you know, we're showing a, uh, a pump station just for this individual project. You know, Raleigh's wish list would, would be a regional pump station at the intersection of Vandoor Springs and Old Stage Road, but that's a $12 million pump station. And they, they have that on their to-do list, I guess. They, they've, they've got some money set aside for that, and I think eventually that will happen, but we do not have a timeframe for that. I know it's been completely designed, hasn't been permitted, but it's been completely designed. They're just looking for funding to do it. Once that happens, other localized pump stations in this area that are put in for different respective project will be taken, will be taken offline. And, and so, right now, it's kind of a first-gone, first-seed type, type deal.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to follow up, sir?
Please. Um, actually, it's not a $12 million pump station. The project overall, which includes pump station upgrades in multiple locations, as well, as well as sewer line upsizing, uh, to accommodate the, uh, growing effluent from this, uh, regional basin, uh, is about $12 million. That was the most recent estimate that the city of Raleigh had. So, uh, this is going to become a bottleneck, uh, that you will hear more and more about as a council, and the town engineering department is highly aware of this. And I want to advocate for a more regional solution rather than just a project-by-project solution. That's why I'm here, and that's all I'd like to say.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Okay. Any, anyone else? Uh, we're going to get ready to, uh, bring this to a conclusion, I believe. We've probably heard from most of the, anybody else that came to testify that hasn't had an opportunity yet? Okay. Anything else from council before I close the public hearing?
Well, I do have a curiosity question. Mr. Smith brought up about the master down, and one of the conditions is it's just at least 100 units shall be a master down, not more than that.
And at least?
Well, it's just at least, but that means it can be 101, and there's 318 units. I mean, if that's supposed to be one of the selling features, you'd think that number would be higher. It's me. I mean, you told us it was, it was the greatest thing since sliced bread, so if that was the case, I believe I'd have more than 30% of them, but that's just, but you told us it's, it could be desirable.
Okay. Um, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Don't see anybody else from the audience? Okay. Um, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this point in time and ask council if you're ready, uh, to move ahead with a vote, and I believe the process would be, uh, taking up the, uh, motion on the zoning first. So, um, you have in your packet some sample wording there. Uh, is council ready to, um, to make a motion on the zoning?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Regarding, I'm sorry.
Just, just one minute.
Sorry.
Just have a question in reference to conditions.
Okay.
When will they be stated? Will it be at this point or at the point of approval, if, if it gets that far? For the special conditions, and what are they, if they are, any?
Okay. That's a good question. Jeff, do you want to?
So the zoning conditions, I would propose that those, I haven't heard anything about needing to add to that list, so I would propose that that just stay as is. Um, but if we want to address the site drive location, um, as well as trading off some of the improvements at Legend for turns at Woodland and, and Vandoor, that we go ahead and attach those to the special use permit, um, and that, uh, if you're okay with it, staff would draft those for the permit to eventually be signed by the mayor. If, if we're understanding your intent on those correctly.
Did answer you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Everybody okay? Okay. Okay. Regarding CDZ 20 dash 06, Old Stage Town Homes, I move that the town council accept staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as our own, and I therefore move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20204092 approving the rezoning requests, CDZ 20 dash 06, as it is reasonable in the public interest and will likely allow households living that are attracted to younger families with children as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller outdoor spaces and allow adequate buffers to, to usable open spaces that'll help preserve and protect adjacent housing stock.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Behringer. Uh, thank you both. Uh, any, any other, uh, issues, comments before we vote? Counsel, you ready to vote? Okay. Um, town clerk, would you call the roll? If you favor the motion, please signify by voting aye.
Certainly. Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the motion carries unanimously, and the rezoning, uh, is approved. Uh, we will now turn our attention to the conditional use permit. Uh, the site is there, don't have it right in front of me, but is there a motion that we approve, um, yeah, we approve the, uh, conditional use permit?
All right, you know, waiting for me to try to do this so I can, so delicately, so I can so delicately add these conditions to it.
Yeah.
All right, I'll try this.
You do a good job of it.
Appreciate that. I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own and found the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14.1D, and therefore approve CUP dash SB dash 20 dash 06, the towns at Ridgemore, with the five conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared with, by staff, and additional conditions, uh, condition number six, that staff will work with the developer in North Carolina DOT to obtain the safest sightline distance and best, uh, location for the driveway closest to the Public Springs Baptist Church for the safety of all persons who drive on Old Stage Road and also who will be in that subdivision. Another condition is that we will encourage the developer and staff to work with DOT and to take any proposed improvements at Legend Road and Old Stage Road and take those, uh, dollars and look at improvements at the intersection of Vandoor Springs Road and Old Stage Road, the left turn movement and some storage, uh, additional storage there to make that left turn lane safer and also to help allow the flow of traffic, uh, on Old Stage Road South.
Okay. Motion properly made.
And I'll also encourage the developer to build more than 100 master, master downs in anyway. I won't make that unofficial motion.
That's unofficially not part of the motion. Okay.
And just for the record, I think in the actual text there, I think we changed the title, but we missed, um, not towns at Ridgemore, but Old Stage Town Homes.
I'm sorry.
No. That's okay. That's our fault.
Old Stage Town, I just didn't even think about that. You're correct. My, my bad. Old Stage Town Homes. Excuse me.
Okay, council, you have a motion before you? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Two seconds of either Mr. Matthews or Mr. Vance. Okay. Uh, any further comments, questions? Hearing none. So, excuse me. Mr. Dellinger?
I do, I do, yes. I do have a comment.
So this, there'll be sidewalks in front of this development, correct? I didn't see the T-shilt enough site plan, but I believe it was doing sidewalks, is that correct?
Okay, yes is the answer.
And just as an aside, I'd also not necessarily partner this permit, but also encourage the developer to work with staff. They're going to do those improvements down Old Stage and Vandora. We try to, when we're partnering with the town, to get sidewalks to connect all the way down to Vandora, since we're spending all this money on those other Vandora connections. There are already sidewalks in front of Vandora Pond, so it's just something to keep in mind for staff to work on that, and it might be something we put in our CIP as well, just to increase that connectivity. It's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I believe we're ready to vote, so I'm going to ask the town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. Again, the vote is unanimous to approve, so to the developers and all those who were here tonight, you have what you needed, I believe, to move forward. We look forward to seeing this completed down the road a little ways. Thank you for being here, Mr. Smith. I do think it'll be a good addition for our fair town, so thank you all for coming. Okay, if you'll go out quietly, I want to recognize a young man who's getting up out there, Mr. David Donnelly, I believe. He is a scout, and he was here tonight in regards to his scouting obligations, and I believe he's working on his Eagle Scout, is that right, Mr. Donnelly? Okay, we want to thank you for coming and being here tonight. If you needed a signature regarding your attendance or whatever, one of us will be happy to help you. I'm going to call a recess right now, okay? Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, council, looking at the clock on the wall, I'm going to declare a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back and finish the rest of our agenda in an expeditious manner, hopefully. You have the council back to order from recess, and we will pick up on our agenda with the next listed item, which is... Let's see, are we under...
Number three annexations.
Yeah, excuse me, I was on the wrong page, yeah. Number three, annexation petition, Waterfield Drive. Mr. Banford, there you are. Thank you, sir. Please lead us into that, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've got three annexations tonight before you for a public hearing. This is the first one. Case number is ANX 20-04, and this is a vicinity map of the site on Waterfield Drive. This is, address is 4500 Waterfield Drive. The site's approximately 9.52 acres in size, or the total annexed area would be 9.52 acres in size. The site's 6.2 acres with the right-of-way included would bring the total up to 9.52. Zoning is mixed-use development, and this is for the project Advanced Concrete, which was approved last December, and this development will connect to town water and sewer, so the annexation petition is a requirement for connection to town services. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, I'm just going to ask the general question rather than go around the loop. Does any council member have a question for Mr. Banford? I'll start with those of you present, then Mr. Dillinger, I'll get to you. Any here? Mr. Dillinger, any questions for Mr. Banford?
No questions.
Okay, so I believe our action is to have a motion to approve the annexation ordinance, is that correct? Okay, you've heard the presentation, no questions. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Behringer, is that right? Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Clerk, would you call the roll? Those who are in favor, please vote aye.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So the motion approved unanimously. Mr. Banford, you're still up, the next item, four.
The next annexation is on Wakeland Drive. The case number is ANX 20-018, and this is a vicinity map of the annexation site. This is a vacant lot, and utilities have been extended to this area over time, and the property owner has filed for a building permit to build a single-family house that will connect to water and sewer. Water is on Wakeland Drive, sewer is behind the lot on the subdivision that was developed to the north. The property is .34 acres in size, address is 713 Wakeland Drive, zoning R15, and again, this is to connect to water and sewer for a single-family house.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Banford's presentation. Are there questions for him on this end? Anybody? Anybody down here? Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
No questions.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this annexation.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews made a motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please respond as the clerk calls your name.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, so thank you, sir. And you're ready for item five, is that right?
This is annexation case 20-19. This is on Maxwell Drive, and this is west of the Greenbrier subdivision. The address is 1001 Maxwell Drive. The site's approximately 13.89 acres. The right-of-way sections that connect across to the other town limits brings the total annexed area to approximately 14.17 acres. And this site is the site for the Jameson subdivision, which was approved in August 2018 for 38 single-family homes, and this development will connect the town water and sewer, so the annexation petition was a condition of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for Mr. Banford on this particular annexation? None here? Any here? Mr. Dillinger?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. A motion is in order as it relates to this request for annexation.
So moved.
Mr. Matthews, is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Okay, Mr. Vance, seconded. All right, questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Please vote as your name is called, and the town clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed unanimously, and it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Banford. Okay, we now go to new and old business, and the first item of business there is an annexation petition that Mr. Banford will explain to us. This is not an action that we're asked to actually approve the annexation, but we're scheduled to schedule for a public hearing. Am I correct on that, sir?
Yes, sir. So unlike the previous three cases that were public hearings, this is to set the public hearing for this annexation case to January the 4th, 2021. This is annexation case 20-...
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, excuse me just a minute. Yes, Mr. Dillinger, I recognize you.
Yes, I'm going to ask council to recuse myself from this particular matter, as I do have a financial interest in it.
Okay, council members, you've heard Mr. Dillinger's request. I believe you're generally aware of his reason for request for recusal. What is your desires?
Move to recuse, Mr. Dillinger.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, recuse, Mr. Dillinger. The other council members, if you will vote, again, we'll do a roll call. You can start with whomever, yeah.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dillinger. You are officially recused, and again, I'll recognize Mr. Banford.
Again, this is annexation case 2020. The address is 105 Shore Drive. The site's approximately .7 acres, and this is a vicinity map of the annexation site. This will be a satellite annexation. Zoning is R20, the use is a single-family house. The recommendation is to set the public hearing for January the 4th. The staff will put a legal ad in the News & Observer to meet the legal requirement for the public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, have any question for Mr. Banford in regards to the request for this action? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for the action recommended, which is to set this for a public hearing on January 4th. That'd be our first meeting in January 2021.
So moved. Second.
Okay, properly moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Matthews. If you will, respond to the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion is approved, sure. Okay, Mr. Banford, are we finished with you at this point?
Yes, sir.
You've served us well tonight, sir. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Treesenberg as well. Okay, I recognize our town engineer for item number two, resurfacing, 2021 resurfacing list. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, council. This item is to bring to you a very brief presentation that will mostly mimic some of the backup that was in your packet regarding the upcoming 2021 resurfacing contract. As you know, we always put together our resurfacing list at the end of each year utilizing some pavement management scoring criteria and software that was passed by council a few years back, and so we're bringing to you our list for this year, which we plan to advertise at the very start of the year, right after the holidays. So the 2021 total pavement management budget contract based on the Budget Office is 1.22 million, and of that, as last year and this year, we have done sort of a 60-40 split between resurfacing budget and then the public works preservation budget, which utilizes other tools. We rounded it off to 61% this year, and that's really just to provide a few extra monies that will go towards a few heavy patching areas that we're doing in addition to some typical resurfacing, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into the slides. But as you had in your backup, we've got a total of 24 streets this year around town, and the three that I've shown there at the 22 through 24 are the three additional streets that we're doing, just what I would call like micro-block heavy patching, where you might have either a low area or area where it gets a little bit more storm drainage, where there's a major culvert, and the pavement tends to prematurely fail a little bit faster than the remainder of the road, or we may have some other issues that we need to address but don't want to go and do the entire street. But overall, we've got a total of just over three miles in this year's contract, and just got a couple overall map showing sort of the spread of the projects throughout town, and then just a couple blowups for the people looking at home. We've got one Cobb Street over in Cloverdale subdivision, and then Dynamic Drive, which is an industrial street on the north side of town off of Mechanical Boulevard. Then on the second map, most of the streets here are in and around proximity, close proximity to the downtown district, including a few streets over in Umstead and Western Terrace with Hilltop Avenue, Circle Drive, and Sunset Avenue. Then on the third slide, two of these streets, Southerby Drive and Southview and Artesian Drive, that's in Forest Landing, those are two of the three streets where we're just doing some heavy patching, like I was talking about, rather than the entire street. And then we've also got three streets over in Van Story Hills, Atchison, Muncie, and Shoals Drive. And then southwest part of town, we've got several streets in the Heather Ridge subdivision and Lake Moore subdivision. And so the next steps after authorizing this contract, we plan to bid this out at the very start of the year when we come back from the holiday break, bring back a opening in council award in February, and then hopefully to begin, execute contracts and start construction by March, typically ending in the late summer timeframe. That's all I have for you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and even before I go to council questions, could you, for the benefit of those who may be listening in or watching, I oftentimes get questions from citizens that says, you know, well, two streets over, they paved those streets over there, you know, why didn't they come over and pave my street? And similar kinds of questions. Could you give a concise statement as to sort of the process?
Sure.
There is a systematic process that is used for deciding?
Yes, sir, there is a systematic process, and obviously, as subdivisions are built, typically larger subdivisions especially are typically built in phases, so they may not have been built at the same time, so their streets, some of the streets within the same subdivision may be older than others, but we are typically following a pavement management score, and depending on the location and terrain and drainage, different streets may degrade differently over time. Some may require resurfacing at an earlier date than another street in the same subdivision, but we basically analyze scores for all town streets. We have, I believe, just over about 110 miles of streets around the town of Garner, and we're updating our scoring every couple years and going through a formulated process to determine which streets are best suited for resurfacing, and of course, there are budgetary constraints that we're trying to fit the right amount of streets into the budget that we can while utilizing that scoring criteria that we have in place. So it is a systematic method, or systematic...
Yes, systematic.
Systematic.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Okay, thank you, sir. Council, questions for our town engineer in regards to this presentation, the resurfacing list? Any down here?
No questions.
Here, Ms. Behringer? Any here? Ms. Matthews?
On the paving, I know you've got paving and your patching, we still do a thing called, and you might still be doing, it might be a different name, under resurfacing, it's like a slurry seal or something. Are we still doing some of that on certain roads?
Yes, that would fall under the public works preservation contract, and they're doing a little bit of, I think, slurry seals and micro-surfacing are sort of very similar types of tools in the toolbox, but yes, we did quite a bit of micro-surfacing this past year that just wrapped up in October.
That's called micro-surface?
Yes, and it's like maybe a quarter inch thick. It almost looks like liquid when it goes down, it's so thin, but it's not, it is a little thicker than some of the other tools that we have, like the preservation that goes in and liquefies, helps improve the asphalt rejuvenator in the pavement, but yes, we are doing quite several miles of the micro-surfacing in addition to the resurfacing contract.
Thank you. Mr. Dillinger, any question?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So I believe council is asked to essentially approve the recommendation and the list as you presented it, right? Okay, council, is there a motion? Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews? Okay, all in favor, well, we'll call the roll again. Is that okay? Yeah?
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes, and you have your marching order, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, the last item under new and old business is something that we spent some... Okay, the last item under new and old business is something that we spent some time talking about at a more recent meeting, park fees in lieu and the changes. So, Mr. Roy Lance is going to lead us in this discussion, so I recognize you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, you're right, we've already had two readings, and this is number three, so I will try to move through the presentation expeditiously. And you can stop me if you want more clarification, and I'll get to the parts that have changed. So, you know, the presentation does cover the fact that we have some enacting legislation and some restrictions, and talk about the current fee and how it compares. And I've got two, we'll probably end up talking about more calculation options than just two, but I have two new ones to show you tonight. And at the end, we'll be asking you to choose which option you want to implement. And then, because it's taken us longer to get this into place, I wanted to at least ask you about the implementation date and whether you want to choose a different date. So, anyway, looking for those two decisions at the end of all this. So, as a reminder, you know, we have, every municipality has authority under state statute to charge a fee in lieu of park land, basically to help new development and the residents that come along with that, help them contribute to the recreation resources that the community needs to keep growing. We also have authority under the town charter to do the same. The wording's a little different, but the principle is similar. So, we have authority under those both areas to charge that fee. And we've been charging it for some time, but it hasn't been updated in a while, and you all asked us to do that as part of the budget. So, that's the process we're going through. Well, we did not do it, we did not take action on it as part of the budget, but in the discussions of the budget, you asked us to come back to that, which we're doing now. Here is a table showing how our fees compare to other municipalities, and at least some local comparisons here in Wake County. And as you can see, we are near the bottom. In some cases, we are at the bottom and by a wide margin, but in any event, there's, there are certainly others that are higher than us. In a couple cases, there's at least one example of a fee that's lower than ours. Fuquay, and in some of these comparisons, I'll talk about it as we go, but Fuquay is in the process of updating, well, their fee is somewhat older, and so it's a little bit outdated, and they are talking about making changes to their fee. And Holly Springs is also, I think, has recently or is in the process of making some changes to their fee. So, in a few cases, we excluded them from some of the comparisons. We just wanted to show you, as it stands now, what it looks like. And we, you know, at the beginning, several meetings ago, we started out with what, I ended up breaking all the options into letters to keep them separate. We had option A, which was driven by the comprehensive plan and the idea that, you know, we should have a certain number of acres of park land per thousand residents, and the same for greenways. And so, we came up with a calculation that way. And then, you all asked that we consider some other options, and so, option B was using a different methodology. And C and D, which I'm going to present to you in a minute, are all sort of similar in that they're driven by comparisons to neighboring jurisdictions, and then looking at, you know, basing the fees off of the average home values, tax values of houses in those jurisdictions. And I have, it might be, actually, you know what, it might be easier to pull up the spreadsheet now. Let's do that. I'm going to walk back for a minute. Let me make this bigger so you can see it better. Of course, the downside to making it bigger is you don't see as much on the screen at one time, but it'd probably be a little easier to read. So, this is option B, which is the one that we talked about last time. But in order to explain the next two better, I wanted to refresh you on this one. So, what we did here was we took the average home, tax value of the average home, and then we looked at the fee that that jurisdiction is charging, and then we calculated, you know, what's the percentage of the home value. And, you know, as I told you earlier, we dropped a couple that weren't good comparisons because they were in flux, and then averaged the rest. And so, that's what this average is here, is about 1%. And the same, you'll notice if you look here, these, this 279, I'm just picking Fuquay as an example, is the same here, because this is the tax value of all homes, all home types averaged together. And so, this option B took the same approach of, you know, doing that average calculation and did it, applied it for all three. And that's how we came up with what we presented to you as option B. You all expressed an interest in, you know, maybe, you know, there are other, you know, other ways of doing it, and other, you know, we have significant needs in the parks area, so are there other options that we could look at? That how we might be able to calculate the fee that would still be logical and make sense based on the statute? So, one option we looked at was what I'm calling option C, which is the exact same premise, exact same calculation as before. But what we did is we took an average, in this case, these average home values, they've changed because this is the average of only the single-family detached, and this is the average of only the single-family attached, like a townhouse, and this is the average of the multifamily. So, the rest is the same. This, you know, figuring out the percentage and averaging them together, all of that is the same as before, but we just split out the averages. And what that does is changes, it basically lowers the... Easier to look at it on this one. So, option B, this one here, was what we started off with last meeting. And then, what I'm talking to you about now is with the separate averages for each category is this column here. And so, what you could see is it lowers the single-family detached one a bit, and it increases the other to this one just a bit, and this one, you know, a more sizable margin. So, that's one option, is we could just look at splitting out the averages differently. And then, option D is... So, in this case, these are the same averages split out, so this is just the single-family detached average and single-family attached average and so on. And what if we just made it 1%? So, you know, if, whatever, you know, 1% of a single-family detached home would generate this fee, 1% of a townhouse average would generate this fee, and 1% of a multifamily unit would average that fee. And so, if we go back here, if you want to see them lined up to one another, this, you know, increases the single-family house a bit compared to option B, which we were talking about last time. And it brings the single-family attached and multifamily up a good bit more. So, those are some options. I think based on the, based on the feedback that you all gave us last time, option D is probably a little bit closer to what you all were looking for, but it's up to you, whatever you want to do. And of course, there's many other, I mean, there's probably 100 different ways that you could calculate this thing. So, there's not so much a right or wrong answer, but we just want there to be some logic to the formula that we can explain. So, that's the, oh, and let me, sorry, let me go back to this slide. In terms of the, at the bottom here, you can see the total amount of revenue. So, that one was option A, which we're not really looking at as much. But option B was going to generate 350 to 450 per year if development patterns remain the same. Option C, which probably isn't too surprising, is in the same range because these numbers didn't change very much from option B. Option D, though, does bring in, you know, about another $100,000 on average. So, that's the additional revenue that would come in on top of the base amount that's coming in currently with the existing fee. And again, that's the comparison chart. And so, you know, we're required to do public hearing and, you know, send something out to our email distribution list, and, you know, we did all those things. So, tonight, really, we're asking you about which fee option do you want? And also, you know, we've been talking all along about implementing the new rates on January 1st. We can still do that. I think we originally thought that we would have made this decision earlier, and there would have been a little bit more lead time for the development community. And so, I wanted to propose an alternative for you all to at least consider, which would be to have the implementation date be on March 1st. So, whichever option you want to pick is okay, but looking for a decision on both of those two, and then whatever the outcome, we'll share that with the development community. And just wanted to remind you all that only developments that come in after that date, whichever date we pick, is, would be subject to the new fees. So, I went over it a little quick, but I know we've been over it many times before. So, let me know if you have questions.
Okay. I don't think I've started with Mr. Behringer tonight as first, but questions, Mr. Behringer, comments?
Just one question and a comment. My only question is, how often would we look to revise this, looking at the averages? I know that revaluations would be the sort of logical point, but the reality is with so much construction, you have new properties coming onto the tax rolls that may have a higher, increase that tax value in between reevaluation period. So, my question is, what are your initial thoughts on revisiting and revising the rate? Do we want to do like a, every, do we want to stick to the reevaluation schedule? Or do we want to do it, you know, every two years? What were your sort of thoughts on that, reevaluating the fee based on the percentage?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we want to balance two things primarily, making sure that it stays current so that we're...
I can't hear him.
Sorry about that, I think the mute button got hit accidentally. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think trying to balance two things, keeping the fee current and making sure that we're bringing in enough revenue to, hopefully enough revenue to meet our needs, and that it's, you know, consistent with the intent of charging the fee in the first place. But also, you know, we'd rather, we'd rather not change it all the time because it's sort of a, it can be difficult for staff to keep up with a constantly evolving fee, and particularly having to go back and sort out down the road, back when it was originally approved, what was the fee. I think as a practical matter, the way the math works, I mean, yes, every, you know, every new house that comes in that's at a higher value than those averages, you know, bring the number up, but only in a pretty, pretty minute way. So, I don't think the fee would move in a meaningful way until we hit a revaluation year. I think if you wanted to compromise, you could do maybe every other, like every two years, do one in between. But I think in practice, you'll find that that interim step does not move the needle very much.
Yes, my, based on sort of that, my recommendation would be to go with D, because what you're using are 2020 numbers, and the prices and stuff are going to continue to go up. So, that 1% in actuality is going to continue to fall. It won't, the fee itself won't, but that 1% relative to the average cost will. So, I'm fine with the higher now because I think it plays, it decreases over time in actuality. My other comment is, I think we should stick with January 1st. I think we've talked about this sufficiently, and developers have had the opportunity to attend the hearings and view them, and I think kind of the direction we're headed has been pretty obvious. So, those are my only comments.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Behringer? Mr. Vance?
No comment?
Okay. Ms. Singleton?
I agree with what Mr. Behringer said on option D. Even with the 1%, which is reasonable and fair, I believe, our fees are still lower, and that's because the tax value of the average single-family detached home is lower than the other ones, as is the attached. The multifamily, it is interesting to see ours is higher than some other towns. But I think the 1% is fair and reasonable. Again, we're still lower than most, we're still lower than everyone around us. So, again, that's based off the tax value, but with the quickly escalating values of residential properties, I think that's where we need to go and damage it right after three or four years. The 1% is not, it's still 1%, but it's worth less. It's like the dollar shrinks slightly. So, I think it's reasonable to do option D because, you know, this is something that will assist us with building future parks.
Okay, thank you. Matthews?
I can go along with D. I do agree with the March timeframe, and the reason I say that right now, anybody in construction, if you're doing any work around your house, you know that lumber prices are all over the gamut if you can get it. They're all out of sight in the pricing structures, all the pieces. And these folks doing these proposals, somehow having to come back and regroup, and it's a confusing time right now, just on account of building materials and what have you. And I think by giving it to that March timeline, that'll give them time for that hopefully to settle down in some way, fashion, or form, where they can be consistent on the prices. In fact, draw all these things into what they're going to sell, but D's fine.
Okay, and just one point of clarification. I think you explained it, on the question of how often these might be revised, I believe I was hearing you say that there's not too much advantage in, you know, doing it fairly often. In fact, there's some disadvantages, but were you suggesting put it on sort of the same timeframe with revaluations? And that is, that's every four years now, is that right?
That's right.
I know at one time it was every seven years or one of you.
Yeah. Maybe eight years, actually.
Eight years, yeah.
It's every four now. And that's what I would recommend, just because I don't think you'll get enough benefit from changing it in the interim, just because the way the calculation works. So, that, my suggestion would be every four, and that also, in addition to helping staff keep straight which fee is which, it gives a little bit of predictability to the developers so they know the fee will be set for a period of at least a few years, but I...
And we don't have to absolutely decide that tonight, even though that's going forward probably. But essentially, what we're asking to do tonight is to, is proving which one of these options we think is best, and also to determine the start date for that.
That's right.
Those are the two main things, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, council, I've heard several of you comment, and so, option D I know was mentioned. There may be others. So, let's, I guess we could take them together. Let's vote on which option you prefer first. I hear a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the revised rate of option D as the preferred option with the implementation date of March 2021.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
You did say D is in dog, right? Just making sure, because Matt kept saying them, and I kept thinking, I think you said D, I don't think you said B.
Sorry.
And I just, let's just, D. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, okay. So, the motion is, yeah, option D with a March implementation date, is that the, yeah, that's the motion? Any questions, comments? All right, I will ask the clerk to call and vote accordingly.
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. And all right, Mr. Matthews, thank you for the work you did on this. I say Matthews, Matt. And for, yeah, providing the background information and the comparison with other municipalities around us, for sure. Okay. I believe we are now down to item J, which is committee reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think he also needed an implementation date.
Yes, the motion contained the implementation date of March?
Yeah, it did.
Excuse me?
I thought, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that, I just, I thought we were doing them separately. I missed it.
He did say March 1st, 2020.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Sorry if there was any confusion, but yeah, he did cleanly state that, yeah, in the motion. Okay, committee reports. Are there any committees that we need to hear from tonight?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, but Public Works Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 8:30 a.m. to discuss three items.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton, sure enough. And the committee that we're working with will have a report probably at the next meeting, I believe it is. Some action later on. Okay. So, I'm now to manager reports. Mr. Manager?
Yes, you have Garner info? Have Garner info in your packet, also building and permit report. And this weekend, the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Department had a drive-through Christmas... Christmas down Main Street and that kicked off what will be the 12 Days of Christmas prerecorded concerts, a series of concerts, and then that will culminate in a live stream performance by the Hall Sisters on December 17th. So that'll be a live production there. So look forward to that. Also want to make you aware of the Chamber Summit Awards program coming up. Someone have a date on that?
Yes.
This Thursday night?
Thursday night, awesome, okay. The tent, yeah.
So you should have to see it, you know, that if you don't see that, that's
And that concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you, sir. And did you note that, yeah, we we've had our Christmas tree lighting, right?
Correct. That was virtual.
Yeah.
And then we had the the drive through on Main Street for the
Right.
Christmas program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Let me see here, attorney reports, Ms. Jones?
I did not have a report this evening.
All right, thank you. And council reports, where shall I start? I'll start with Ms. Behringer, right here next to me.
Just a couple of things. There is on John Sausage Road, as you go behind the the middle school and over towards White Oak, there's there's trash lining both sides of the road, it's pretty bad. It's probably about the worst I've seen in a while, so that needs to be picked up. And a few weeks ago, I reported that the sign in front of the dog park on Garner Road, the our our All America City sign had looked like mildew on one side and did not look very attractive, but it's been cleaned and it looks very, very nice now. So thanks to, I guess, Public Works who cleaned that, it was a great job. And the third thing is you need to let Ms. Jones know that she has to listen to the Hall Sisters on the last day of the 12 Days of Christmas. That will be just so enjoyable, you'll really be glad you did.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go to Mr. Singleton next.
Yes, I have a question for Attorney Jones. When Mr. Marshburn, we had to ask every person, is it okay if the meeting's virtual? Is that part of the law, state law requirements, or I'm just curious?
Yes, that's part of the remote meeting requirements. And if any one or more members of town council is participating virtually, then it becomes a remote meeting under state law. And for quasi judicial hearings, it requires the consent of all parties withstanding.
Okay.
So it's just a good practice to make sure that everyone consents. We obviously don't know about the people who don't participate, but we assume that they've consented to it or they would have raised an objection either in writing to the council or clerk or or they would come and say they don't consent.
Okay. So it's because a council member or whatever is in a town or a city is not here, they're virtually, and they're virtual. It's because they're not physically here.
That's correct, whether they're
Participating by video or by audio.
Okay. So I was curious because I thought, you know, we've been on face, you know, live streaming on Facebook for a while and that's not, it's virtual, but it's not us being virtual. It's when a council member is not here but virtual. So that's that's the difference.
That's the way the law is currently written. We don't know if when the General Assembly goes back into session in January, whether or not they might revise this law, because there's been a range of different responses by local jurisdictions throughout the state on how they're handling remote meetings.
All right. Thank you very much. I've just got my curiosity up here. Thank you. That's all I'm saying.
I'll go to Mr. Matthews.
Just one thing I have beat to death and you don't see this in another town in Wake County, but this gentleman down here on Timber Drive, that's supposedly mentally got issues, he's sleeping on a transformer, there's trash all around it, there's a storage being out there now. It looks like a garbage dump out there and he sleeps on his feet sticking out. You don't know if he's alive or dead. And I take pride in our community and people ask me, why are we going to do something about this situation? And there's got to be something that can be, and I've heard, must've been said, but he's going to get himself killed or get out in that street and people are terrified to walk on that side of the street and they don't. The families stay away from it because he's screaming and hollering at everybody and it's time for this thing to come to a halt. I understand the guy has mental issues and I'm sensitive to that, but this is not the place for it. The man needs some help, we need to get him off the street and I want to know what we can do about it besides nothing.
Let me make a quick comment and then I'll be happy to hear from others. This has been a topic of discussion over the last week or two. I've heard from a couple of citizens and unfortunately, there's not an easy solution that I've heard so far. This is, I guess if there had been an easy solution, we would have already adapted and adopted it. But I know the town manager has attempted to be in touch with some people at Wake County Mental Health or at least a subprogram there to talk about options and things that can be done. So far, we have a, we we don't have a specific directive there, but I just wanted you to know, we are exploring what options we think are are out there. We certainly don't think it's simply a police issue where police can go out there and just, you know, roughed him up or whatever. When I say roughed him up, I don't mean rough him up, I mean, ask him to move or whatever. So I wish I could tell you, sitting here, that 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 there's, there's, there's something specific. There are indications that this gentleman suffers from from schizophrenia or some other psychosis. And, you know, laws don't clearly say, you know, you can go out there and take this man off the street, so to speak. But I'll defer to anything the manager wants to say or others in the managerial staff.
If I went out and squatted and put up a tent and camped on the right side of Timber Drive, I don't think I'd last very long out there because it is, it's a main thoroughfare and it's, well, you come into our town, hey, there's feet sticking out on top of that transformer, looks like a garbage dump over there. I don't think I would be tolerated squatting out there. There's got to be somewhere, something, we can do something about this. Now, I find it hard to be, we're going to sit here and do nothing. And I understand the mental thing and I am sensitive and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. But it's time something's done about this.
Can we not contact Wake County Human Services?
We have.
They're not going to do anything? I mean, they haven't done anything? They haven't responded? Is Anne Marie Mariano still, is Anne Marie Mariano still in charge of that?
She's in a different division now, I believe, or she's assistant director, I believe.
I wonder, though, if it would be worth our while to get in touch with her to get some direction since we're not getting anywhere.
Well, I contacted someone in the office, I'm waiting to hear from them.
How long ago was that?
Three days ago, about three days ago.
That's ridiculous. I mean, I believe you, but it's ridiculous that they haven't gotten back with you.
No offense to y'all, but I hate to tell you, but you cannot just, someone who may have some mental issues, you just can't pick them up and take them somewhere. That just doesn't work anymore. Our mental health system has changed over the last two decades, you just can't do that. It breaks y'all's heart.
Yeah.
If they go inside there and they're deemed not to be in a danger to anyone else, they can't just keep them there. And I don't know if the person has any family, but this is just not pick them up and take them somewhere, you want to drop them off it. I would say big seal because that's what it used to be and leave them there, that just, it doesn't work that way anymore. This has changed dramatically. This is why police officers have become become semi mental health professionals, because they deal with this on a regular basis. So this is not just pick them up and let's go somewhere or call somebody and take care of it because there are homeless people all over the corner. Now, true, this situation, I admit, he's very visible and and does have some some mental health issues, but this just isn't something you just do this and it's going to take care of it. I tell y'all, he he may go somewhere and get some help, but then he can be right back out on the street.
Years ago, we, Reggie had organized a group, we were meeting with Anne Marie and a couple of other people about how to handle these situations. Is that no longer possible? The advice we got at that time, is that no longer?
Well, I contacted one of the persons that was a part of that group, I'm just waiting to hear from them. They may not be there anymore. I need to maybe check and see if they got the email.
If I'm not mistaken, they, some of the information we got back then, it was that 75% of the homeless people out there are schizophrenic and will not let you help them.
Right, that's part of the issue because we've heard a story today, earliest today, that someone tried to give the gentleman food and he didn't want any help.
Yeah, I heard you say that. He was real ugly about it, too. Yeah.
And I and I would just say, I mean, I, we, we don't need a, I guess, a disjointed approach, that is, by saying, but what I'm about to say to each of you individually, you know, if if you have contacts with some agency or people that can, you know, offer some constructive and specific advice, you know, certainly as mayor, I'm open to it. And like I said, I've had several meetings with Rodney on this. And if there's a short term solution, let us know. There may be a longer term solution that we're trying to, we're trying to find out.
I wonder what the other municipalities do in a situation like this?
What was the question?
I wonder what other municipalities do in a situation like this?
They have issues like that also.
Down in downtown Raleigh in the middle of the night, you'll find out.
Oh, downtown Raleigh, that's a whole different story down there.
Yeah, we've been, we've even been in contact with the nonprofit that, you know, assists and aids the homeless and they are aware of this gentleman and there's really not a lot they can do. If if he doesn't voluntarily try to receive help, we can't force it on them. And that's, you know, part of the issue.
Well, the people are scared to walk up and down the sidewalk because he's screaming and hollering at them. And we got an issue here, we can say what we want to, but as a city councilman and as a duly elected councilman, we need to do something about this. And I like to hear some decent response, other than we're waiting on somebody, we're waiting on somebody. We can wait to, you know, what freezes over and never get an answer because mental health is a, it's a rough thing. I remember at county level, when I was commissioner, it was a big issue. And I understand, I truly do understand it, nobody wants to get involved, but we've got an issue there that people are concerned with and I think it's going to be a safety issue and who knows where it's going to happen, then it's going to be, well, we should have done something about it. So I sure like some follow up.
By the law, you cannot restrain or physically make them go to a medical hospital, to a mental health facility, that's against the law. They are not to do that, to deal with this when I got piled with my mother and her dementia. I mean, you know, someone said, she says incident that happened when she went to the hospital, they said, you need to do this, and then have a power of attorney, then you, I couldn't do it. My father couldn't do it. It's not, this isn't just, we can do something, they have rights too. And that's part of the change in mental health over the last 20 years. But you just cannot physically pick them up and take them somewhere. Police can take, to take them somewhere if he was littering or doing this or disturbing the peace, they could, but they're not going to hold him.
So back to your point there, I know when my father was deteriorating, his doctor declared him a danger to himself. That be done with someone like this? And then you have the, you know, the the authority to make appropriate moves, but
But but who's going to make the appropriate moves if he doesn't have any family and he can't speak for himself?
Okay.
That's the key here, is someone has to step up and speak for him, unless he becomes a guardian of the state or whatever it's called now. I don't know what it is. And that's a whole legal process, that's a whole nother animal you go through.
And you have to prove he's a danger to himself if he's been out there and been surviving, although it's not the way we would want to live, but he's been surviving and
I don't disagree with what's being said because I've seen the same thing. I've given him water before, given him food before, when he was, we were practicing soccer at South Garner, he would be up there. But yes, Phil's right, he screams and yells and yes, it is intimidating to people.
Yeah, Public Works has cleaned up out there time or two.
I've seen the before and after. Let me give a, let me give a couple of the council members a chance to weigh in, then I'm going to make a suggestion perhaps based on what I've heard. Mr. Vance, I don't know if you've had a chance to weigh in on this or if you want to say anything.
Well, I I passed by it, but I don't know the situation, so I'm just listening and gathering information right now.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, sir. Mr. Dellinger, any comments, observations?
No, I kind of agree with everyone. I mean, it's just a very difficult situation to deal with. So I trust the mayor and town manager to find a solution to it.
Okay. Well, you, I think counsel knows me enough to know that I I sort of believe in in committee work, that is, letting a smaller group of people than the council take up an issue and and work on that. And so to Phil's point, you know, I understand your frustration and your feeling that something needs to be done. I'll be happy to appoint a couple of you, if you want to volunteer as a committee, and I'm not saying this in jest, I'm just saying, if 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 a couple of people can can take this on as a project to see what the options are, that that would certainly be one way to approach it and you'd have a firsthand look at it as opposed to hearing from me or others. Otherwise, I mean, I I will continue to work with with the town manager. I mean, obviously, he's got a lot of other duties to do, so, but to explore options, but but we haven't found any short term solutions for it at this point and I don't know what we'll find out by a longer term solution. So we're exploring what options we know right now, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, just my recommendation, instead of appointing a committee at this point, if you would just allow me and Mr. Roy Lance to kind of reach out to some more of our contacts at the county
Okay.
And just see what we can, what we can find out, what can be done.
Okay. I I'll be pleased to do that. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, I understand the frustration and and the need and I think most of us are maybe not so concerned that this person's littering the road and maybe is dangerous to people. I mean, that's a concern, but for his own safety and for his own good, if there, if there are ways he can be assisted to get in a more stable situation and off the streets, I think that's what most of us would prefer. So you've heard the town manager's recommendation and I'm happy to defer and give him and Mr. Roy Lance or anybody else on the staff an opportunity. And I I'll certainly try to make myself available in the same way. Agreed? Okay. Let's see, we were in the middle of hearing from you, are you finished, Mr. Matthews?
That's all I have.
Don't bring up anything that's going to take us
I'm a very sensitive person, I truly am, because I know any night in Wake County, it's 200 veterans sleeping under a bridge somewhere. We know those numbers and and I'm very sensitive to that. I just, just, we just need to do something and we'll leave it where you've assigned it and I look forward to the feedback.
Good deal. Thanks, sir.
I might try contacting Seth Friedman, he's the director of Passage Home. That's the nonprofit downtown Raleigh and their their mission is to get homeless people off the streets, particularly veterans. And Seth's very proactive, they deal with this a lot. So they have some answers that we haven't, you know, haven't come across our desk yet.
And I've met him before and in fact, I served temporarily on their board, so I'd be happy to work with you in terms of a contact there to see what he can do. Okay, I've lost count of who, let's see, have we gone around everybody? Do we have all our council reports or did I miss down here? Okay.
Me and Mr. Dellinger, he's waving his hand.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Oh, no.
And I have several reference to
Mr. Vance first, okay?
And the first one is in reference to car sales within the right of way of NC 50 and proximity to the entrance of Foley Station. I just noticed several cars there for sale and when I passed by, there were people getting out of their cars to go over there to to see, to to look at those vehicles. Just want to make you aware of that. And on this coming Thursday at the Summit Awards, for all the hard work that the Economic Development Department did and and recruiting Amazon to the loc, to the location where they're now currently doing business, will the, they're up for an award on this coming Thursday. Has not been received, but they're in the running for a war for the work that's been done. So my hats off to the Economic Development Department and their hard working at effort. And Trash Loan Joan Sausage has already been addressed. And one last thing, this is the, if my father was still alive, I would be hearing a story right now. And this story would be about Pearl Harbor, December 7, 1941. He was there and he was on the the hospital ship soldiers and he saw the Arizona go down and he saw the bodies in the water and I believe that, well, I know that affected his life. So my hats off to those veterans who are still alive and to those veterans who are currently in service and to those who are not. Thank you for your service. you for your service.
Thank you for sharing that, just on a personal note, I had the great privilege of, uh, being in the great state of Hawaii about four or five years ago, and the visit to that place was probably the highlight of, of that visit to Hawaii, it's a, it's a touching and a moving, uh, experience, uh, to go there, um, to that memorial they have there, sure enough, thank you for sharing. Uh, Mr. Dillinger, excuse me, I didn't forget you, sir.
Hold it to five.
Appreciate that. I've got a list, got a long list.
Hold it to five minutes.
No, I actually only have two things, um, one is Max Adams let me know that the Lions Club is doing, uh, food drive on December 12th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM over on Main Street to benefit Garner Area Ministries and Community of Hope, um, it's drive-by, contactless, and, um, non-perishable items only, um, the other is, I just want to express my appreciation again to council for their flexibility in letting me attend remotely, um, out of certain, uh, own personal health concerns related to COVID, um, I'm always appreciative of that, so thank you very much.
Okay, um, and, um, I know we need to go into closed session, that's our next item, I will mention that, um, based on some conversations that we have had and concerns about the increasing, uh, evidence of the spread of COVID-19, um, whether or not the, the council, uh, maybe too late to have a long discussion tonight, I would think, but, uh, whether or not there's interest in trying to move back to virtual meetings, um, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, you've heard me say in the past, I prefer in-person meetings, uh, and, and if we continue with in-person meetings, I certainly respect the right of, of those of you who, uh, who would prefer to attend remotely, as Mr. Dillinger is tonight, um, but if there's a strong desire to, uh, to, to essentially go back to, uh, virtual meetings, that, that's, that's something, between now and our next meeting, we can definitely set that as a, as a issue to take up, uh, on, unless you want to, uh, try to take any action on that tonight.
Could I make a comment on that, Mr. Mayor? Uh, I'm very sensitive, those, uh, that have concerns, such as Mr. Dillinger here, that, you know, we can accommodate any individual who has those concerns, but, uh, with everything that we have got going on, it's just, and we, it looks like we have a good setup, staff has done a fantastic job of social distancing, and everybody's in masks, and I'm not aware of any issues that, unless it's come by, I'm not aware of it, but I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I think as long as we can be in session, it helps out, and it does expedite things, uh, versus pushing them back, but if somebody does have a concern, that, that we should accommodate them, uh, on this, and we've got the capability of doing that.
Okay, anybody else here to comment?
I'd say that as long as we have the individual ability to make that choice, then we can end virtually as needed.
And maybe I should clarify with the, the town attorney, uh, if we, if we're having in-person meetings, is there a requirement of a, at least a minimal number of council members, we have to be present?
Under the current law with, um, Session Law 2023, it just says...
So all members could participate virtually, or... Or, since you could have one member here, and the rest of... In fact, while the executive order is declaring emergency, which we anticipate...
But once those go away, these virtual meetings opportunities will go away, we assume.
Right, there always was the ability... Because you can see... That would continue... Public, particularly the...
Well, I would just say, um, council, think it over, if you want to take it up as a formal issue, uh, at our next meeting, we can, unless you want to act on it tonight, I, I, otherwise, I will suggest our last meeting in December be, uh, an in-person meeting, and for those who would prefer to, uh, attend remotely, we'll certainly do it that way, and if you want to formally, and of course, we'll know a little further then, I guess, what, uh, further orders the governor may issue as relates to, uh, the continuing, continuing concern about the coronavirus. Mr. Dillinger, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I'd just make the suggestion that maybe what we do is kind of confer with each other and make a decision, maybe by the 16th, um, the conditions may change dramatically, and it's obvious what we need to do, so instead of making a decision tonight, uh, kind of make that decision in the middle of next week, before the next meeting.
Okay, um, anybody else have a comment on that?
I just stated that, uh, when you sent the email out and asking that, that I was flexible either way, I just want us to make sure that we can still have public hearings, because when we stopped, the first time, we stopped public hearings, and I just want us to make sure that we, we are able to have the public hearing part of the process, uh, the towns and cities are doing it, so as long as we follow the law and allow people to have input, and whoever comes before us for the, for whatever public hearing, I just, I would wish, just wish those could concern, wish those could continue remotely, or, or whatever's, works best for those, those persons.
Okay, somebody, y'all, Mr. Manager?
I was gonna say, we're just, you know, every day looking at just different technology options, so we can accommodate whatever council chooses to do, uh, even with the public hearings, I think we got some new features in our teams and technology that we can try to put in place, um, also, I, I think the governor's gonna have a, uh, announcement tomorrow, and then the current executive order was gonna end on the 10th, I think?
Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah.
Um, so, that might give us some further guidance on what we're gonna do, and then, um, I failed to mention during, uh, manager reports, that UNC Health System is gonna be conducting COVID testing, um, at Avery Street Gym, starting tomorrow, they'll be there, um, tomorrow and Thursday, so, um, they are encouraged that you go online and, uh, register, pre-register, and, um, they're primarily targeting those that, um, know they've been around someone with COVID-19, or someone that's experiencing symptoms, is their target, so, I don't know if they'll accept anything besides that, but you can go to their website and check that out.
Thank you, sir, okay, all right, uh, I believe we are ready to go into closed session, you have the site there, someone want to make a motion to that effect?
May I move, we go on to, uh, closed session pursuant to the NC General Statutes 143-318.11 Subside A, Subsub 5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Do we need to vote probably publicly, Ms. Attorney, on this?
Yes, you still recall.
Okay, all right, uh, Ms. Clerk, if you will pull the, uh, council on this motion?
Aye.
House Member Dillinger?
Aye.
House Member Rappi?
Aye.
House Member Singleton?
Aye.
House Member Ray?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for the positive vote, I'm gonna declare, um, we are moving into Are we ready?
Yes, sir, whenever you're ready.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna declare that we are back in open session, following a closed session, and I'm going to call on Councilmember Singleton to briefly summarize our, um, our closed session meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council discussed, uh, several different, uh, potential or possible real estate acquisitions, and, uh, took no action at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that the meeting be adjourned.
So, executive here, all in favor, do we need to call the roll for the adjournment, Ms. Jones?
I think that one you can do by consent.
Okay, all right, all right, poll who consent, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, we are adjourned, thank you very much.